14-8 is not implicated in this at all. And if you disagree, I want the page number.
And I agree, Councilmember Bordenman, that I have no, we have no evidence to say what exactly it was that caused the, what we believe to be a bias that was injected into this process. I agree. We do not know, and we're not making that allegation. We're making, our claim is based on the fact that this, this process, there was clearly, any reasonable taxpayer who looks at this is going to see that there clearly was something going on. We don't know what that was, but there was something that injected improper bias, so that Lime was not, it was not graded in a fair way, in fair and impartial way.
But I guess if I can enter, take my meeting back, is you can't prove anything. You can't cite anything, and that is the basis of the questioning from Mr. Borden, is you're citing a deficiency in our process based on something that you can't prove.
And again...
Just to clarify.
I guess, Your Honor, when you say you can't prove, we do believe that by a preponderance of the evidence, we've shown that there is an impropriety in this process, that the process should not be adopted as it stands. But I agree with Councilmember Bordenman that we are not making any sort of personal allegations as to the reason why this member of the city's staff took the actions they did. I don't know that, the mental piece of that, and we're not, we haven't made any allegations about that.
Just a couple of final questions, Madam Mayor, if I may. I didn't see anything that indicated there was any discussions amongst the panel members for their scores. I saw the scores of all the other panel members, each rated Bird higher than Lime in every category amongst all of the other panelists. That fact still remains, and I didn't see anything that called into question all of those scores. Is that fair to say?
That's correct. Councilmember Borden, and let me add one thing. So, we agree, and we do concede, that if this individual, the city staffer, if her score is removed from this process, we still, on the whole, would have scored lower than Bird. But our point is that in, consistent with the council's intent, and I've watched those meetings and I've read what was passed, and I believe Councilmember Borden, it was actually you, I think, that made the motion to get an RFP process that would select up to two. And it's certainly within your discretion. We are not here saying that you have to side with Lime and take both. That certainly is not the case. We would just ask that, consistent with your original guidance on the topic, you would consider it if you get rid of the divergent score. That's what we were asking.
Understood. And Madam Mayor, I appreciate that. I would think, as a professional courtesy, I would, I would hope that you would, if not publicly, privately apologize to Ms. Kane because of the implication of that citation. I think that is a horrible site, probably wasn't your intent, but I think that's a terrible citation to lobby without evidence to back it up, okay, on the personal and financial gain. As to the, my read of this, it appeared as though there were divergent scores, but you were also provided 317 words that described perhaps the basis for some of those concerns. And I get why you don't like the scoring as it was done, but I saw that there was some data provided to at least explain why there was scoring that was provided.
May I, Councilmember Borden? That's correct, and we actually cited that as part of our, you know, we read it the other way, sort of a justification for the low score. And that's why Lime actually created this chart that I attached to my letter, which sort of goes through and shows how, with that specific commentary that you were discussing, the justification, if you will, for this individual's scoring, we've actually created a chart that shows that specific areas where we had the exact same stuff in the RFP. And we're not coming back later and saying, oh, no, we really do have this stuff. I mean, it's right there in the documents that shows Lime presented the same stuff, but it wasn't given credit in the written feedback.
Can I speak to that for one second? Just one example of many, I mean, there's 38 pages to this document that shows some rather similar RFPs, but in Section E of PROs, in the 38-page document that you got, Bird was given 20 points, Lime was given zero. And I'm trying to track when we've received zero before on, on anything from any city. And in the PRO citations, the Debbie attorney says, gives PRO for Bird for having photo verification of proper parking, enforcement incentive plan, vehicle speed caps, remote monitoring, preferred parking and enforcement, geofenced no-ride zones, and governed speed limits. Every single one of those is in the Lime proposal, sometimes in more words and pictures than Bird provides. And Bird gets, and Lime gets zero PRO citations and zero points. There is a clear, black-and-white substantive difference that can be seen in the way that one RFP was treated from the other, from somebody who controlled the process to a large degree from start to finish. And that is alarming from our point of view, because we have not seen that before in any city in which we operate, or any city in which we have been denied operations.
I will tell you, the process is controlled by our purchasing agent or manager, and certainly I would ask Keith if you have any kind of comment to this dialogue, because it is about our process. The appeal is, is there a deficiency in our process, or is there something in our process that was not followed that would cause us to have to throw out all responses and do a new RFP?
The short answer to that, Madam Mayor, is no. We did follow our processes. I included a set of our SOPs that were done in 2016. We follow those to a T. One of the things that's unwritten in our process that we did, that I followed up on, is when I have a score that's different like that, I'll go sit down with that evaluator and say, are you good with these scores? Are you sure that's what you want to do? And did you cite everything? And Emily went through there and said, yes, she stands by the score. She cited the reasons why. With them, I left that score in. The other reason that, that it didn't concern me that much is being a part of the process. I know the results of the entire evaluation committee, and I know the decision of the entire committee. And even if you threw out Emily's scores, if you chose to do so, it would not change the outcome of this RFP process. The committee as a whole has, has rated Bird higher. They all selected to award Bird a contract and not Lime, not based on scores only, but like I'd said before, a deficiency in their proposal.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Mr. Watson, Mr. Neri, do you have any concern that if this council were to decide we're going to award contracts to both parties, that if legal action were to be taken against us, that, do you have any concern that a judge would say, well, it says "the city," but the city council does not qualify as "the city" when explained or mentioned countless times in all the authorities given to, quote, "the city" over and over and over?
Madam Mayor, Mr. Councilmember Palmer, I'm not always comfortable giving you legal advice here, but the answer would be yes. I would be concerned that a judge is going to say two things. One, Bird's proposal met all the criteria and was the recommendation of the committee. Lime's was not. So to simply ignore all of that ignores your entire process, not just a piece of it. Secondarily, the, as Mr. Watson stated, you don't, as a council, ever be involved in these decisions. In all the time that all of you have been here, has this ever come in front of you for you to change the decision of the committee? The answer would be no, because the committee, the people making those recommendations or selection are the ones that do that. You can reject the entire proposal, but not bits and pieces. So I would be concerned if you picked, as you're proposing or suggesting, that you would have, a court have a concern on how you are fairly adjudicating your process. Your process is to reject all bids and start over, or deny the, deny the appeal and move forward with the requirement, with the recommendation. That's what your process says.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer.
If we were to do a new RFP, would we be able to include language that says the committee will make a recommendation in which council then make a final decision?
In that would be inconsistent with our process.
Again, that's your policy that's already been adopted.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Then in that case, we definitely, I feel like we cannot proceed with the committee's recommendation. It clearly, I mean, you read the minutes of the meeting prior to the issuance of the RFP, each councilman that spoke clearly indicated that the language was to include that up to were to be included. And again, Councilmember Borden's motion was also clearly related to that effect. Ms. Kane is a valued member of our city staff, and she's provided years of excellent service to the city. And so while I've read through, again, also every page front and back of all the information that was provided, I think the most important aspect of this was that council's intention and our instruction was not followed with the RFP that was issued, which was acknowledged by Ms. Kane in her memo. So with that, we need to, I feel like we do need to start over if we're not in a position to be able to safely award the contract to both, ensuring that the language is in there, that it will be up to two, not exclusive, and that the committee fully understands that, you know, a minimum scoring level may need to be set. And if both, or if, if there are multiple proposals that meet a minimum scoring requirement to be considered qualified to serve the city in that capacity, that the top two score getters should be awarded the contract.
Well, I would ask if there's any other comment. I know we have one council member who hasn't weighed in. Any comment from Miss Little Roberts?
Madam Mayor, I mean, this is trying to follow the process, and it seems like that has been dealt with in an effective manner. I think that you're reviewing it, and there was a couple of things that I was trying to look up really quickly. I apologize. Because I was, I did kind of acquiesce with the way that we said it, but I supported all along that we only select one, at least this first go-around. But I did agree with the verbiage that we could do up to two. And so I was actually in recommendation that we only start with one for our test run. And I think that we have followed the process, so I would agree that we continue on with the single selection that has gone through the process.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Madam Mayor, I don't have any questions. I do have some comments, but I don't have any more questions for the appellant or staff at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, thank you.
Please.
Counsel, I appreciate everyone's homework and due diligence on this. I think when we started talking about bike share, scooter share, I was the one that was a big cheerleader for it, and I've had the opportunity to engage with a couple of vendors before Meridian started talking about this. And I still maintain that I think this is a good service to our community regardless of who we select as vendors. I have been, at times, very critical of the city's process on this, from scooters being pulled off the streets without consulting counsel, to how we've kind of changed our minds to how we want to build this process. So I can, I can appreciate the appellant's criticism of the process. What I do take significant exception with, and I appreciate the very articulate and diplomatic comments of Councilmember Borden, I take great exception at the criticism of our employees without any proof. Councilmember Palmer put it mildly. Emily Kane is just not just a valued employee for the city of Meridian. She is exceptional. And while I have disagreed with her on many occasions, I find her ethics and her approach remarkable. That said, there is a piece that has caused me somewhat concern. I'm not an attorney, so I appreciate having attorney up here, and Councilmember Borden, who, who has a much stronger legal eye. I look at this from that of a citizen. And there are things that I believe an average citizen in our community would look at and say, hmm, did some employers, some people that were on the scoring committee think that they were only supposed to pick one when really we wanted two? I think that's very, very possible. I, I don't think that Ms. Kane did anything intentionally to change the scores or to impact the scores. I just don't think that is in her nature. And for the appellant's benefit, you don't know this individual. Like, we know this individual, and we trust this individual. But I think that if an average citizen were to look at this, they would say, from the beginning with our process, something just hasn't, maybe doesn't add up right. And that's definitely how I feel. I appreciate Mr. Neri saying that we can't award contracts to both. Quite frankly, I don't think that would be the prudent decision either. If, if we as a body feel that there was some flaw, deficiency, intentional or unintentional, then we should begin this process again. And I say that devastated, because I have been very vocal in my criticism about how long this process has taken. And I hear still weekly from our citizens, what's going on with scooters? Scooters are going to be the death of me, I swear. But I think that if we, and Mayor, you brought up a very valid point. If this body says, we don't want to be in the scooter business, I think that is an appropriate conversation for this body as well, and I can't believe that I'm saying that. But I think that that is also something this council should consider. I don't believe that. I think that we should be providing the service to our citizens, but I believe to begin this anew, if only to cure any appearance of any improprieties, intended or not. So, for what it's worth, I'm supportive of us beginning this process anew, but I'm open to other suggestions or ideas from this body.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Mylum.
So many thoughts. So, this has been really tough for me, and I've really decided, going through this process has made me have a little bit of a disdain for the scooter business. However, I think that the process was followed, or, you know, Keith has got up here and testified that the process was followed. The scoring was just one factor, which was not the deciding factor on which company was selected. They gave clear reason why Bird was selected, because of the age verification. And I don't see, I don't see how anything, any wrongdoing was done by the committee. I felt, reading through your documents, like you're bullying Emily. And it was really hard to get through. When I see things that are taken out of proportion, words misconstrued, because this has happened to me, and I have been the victim of that, and I take a big offense to that. That has nothing to do with my decision, that I have listened to everybody, and I feel that the process was followed the way that it was supposed to. And yes, I was one that was up here saying, we could do three. Don't even limit it to two, maybe three. And it was up to two, not the first two or a minimum of two. It was up to two. The scoring committee, even forget about the scores, the committee decided to go with one. If we start this process over, summer's gone, we're getting back into winter. This ends in December. So I think we go with, with the recommendation that the committee gave us, and you could apply again in, like, October, November, whenever we start the process, and get, try to get accepted for next year. It starts again in January. So, I mean, we're really talking about a short period of time, and I think that if we just start over, the only losers are, are citizens who are looking forward to riding scooters this summer.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Kevner.
Just remind the council, if, I wouldn't get real excited about us just awarding one for the sake of awarding one. We've got a budget amendment before us, or, sorry, a budget request for us for this budget year to hire additional staff for the Clerks' Department to help manage this program. I think that funding analysis was built under the assumption that we were going to have two. And so, what my concern is, from a, from a budget standpoint, is, is that we're hiring a position based on added workload from a scooter program and not bringing in the funding mechanism to cover that cost.
Just to put the staffing in perspective, it had very little to do, if anything, to the scooter program. So, just to clarify. Additional comments? If not, we do have an appeal in front of us, and I look for your direction.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Kevner.
I will give it the old college try. I move that we, Mr. Neri, will we be granting the appeal or denying the appeal? Okay, Madam Mayor, I move that we grant the appeal of the purchasing manager's denial of protest for Lime.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borden.
I'm, I'm not supportive of the motion. I, if, again, it just goes down to the narrow issue of process, process being set up. If the committee recommended two, great. Recommended Lime, great. Bird, great. It's not something that we review. Scoring supports a recommendation, and it would support a recommendation, excuse me, not a recommendation, a decision, which is a key distinction. It's not a recommendation to us for us to decide. The decision has been made. It's a closed, completed matter. The issue before us is much more narrow, is an appeal of that existing decision to see if it was made in error and inconsistent with our existing policy. I can't make that find it. Whatever their decision could have been, I think it would have been consistent with our policy, whether it was both or either. So, for that reason, I've got a vote against the motion.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Kevner.
Appreciate the comments, Councilmember Borden. I guess, for me, the findings that I was able to, to find was that it appeared to be there were at least multiple members of that committee that, when that process began, believed that they were only selecting one vendor, which is counter to what council had intended.
Okay, any further discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
No.
Councilmember Borden?
No.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
No.
Councilmember Kevner?
Aye.
Councilmember Borden?
No.
Okay. The motion fails.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Kevner.
Do you take two, then?
Madam Mayor, I move that we deny the appeal of the purchase manager's denial of protest, the 2019 request from Lime.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to deny the appeal. Is that correct?
Correct. Madam Mayor, I have a comment. Sounds like this council wants to move forward, so let's move forward. Councilmember Mylum put it, I think, very articulately. Vendors will have another opportunity to apply in six months, five months.
Okay, any further comment? Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Borden?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
No.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Kevner?
Aye.
Councilmember Borden?
Aye.
The ayes haven't. So, Mr. Neri, next steps.
Madam Mayor, the, we held the process of the contract. That was, Mr. Watson indicated of awarding it to Bird, so we can continue with that contract process and complete that. And I would assume we would get that within two weeks, either next week or the following week.
Okay, okay. So you'll see this back on your agenda. Mr. Kevner?
Just a comment. I think I've, this, during the last three meetings, we've talked about this. I think this process has shined a pretty bright light that maybe, as a city, we need to look at other municipalities in the region, and look at maybe VRT or another jurisdiction, just to manage a regional wide scooter program. I think that that would serve the region in a much better manner and free us up from these challenging decisions.
That's an excellent idea. So we will assign our board member to bring that forth to VRT for that discussion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Excellent discussion. Thank you, and thank you for being here.
Madam Mayor, sorry, one more. I know we're trying to move things on. I just thank you, Lime, for being here and for being flexible. I know you sat through our last meeting where we continued, and then I made a request for us to move you guys from their earlier meeting to the later meeting so I could be here. Appreciate your patience in accommodating us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Item B is findings, facts, collisions of law for Gander Creek North and South, H. 2019-0013. And I'll ask for staff comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The applicant has noted two areas of concern with the conditions of approval noted in the findings, Section 8 of the staff report, that staff and legal has determined needs council's clarification as follows. Condition number A, 1C, this was the condition that council changed the timing on for construction of the pedestrian walkways along the entire frontage of the side adjacent to McCrossan Avenue and McMillan Road. Council changed it to the first phase of development rather than the earlier part of the second phase of development, or at the time of substantial completion of the high school, consistent with West Ada School District's construction timeline for the high school. The applicant has noted that this condition requires the construction of the walkways along the frontage of those streets with the first phase of development. The prior condition, as I stated, was with the earlier part of the second phase or construction of the high school. The applicant feels that the two conditions are a bit inconsistent regarding timing. It's customary to install the sidewalk pedestrian walkway on McCrossan as part of the construction project of the street, and they believe that council intended that the sidewalk pedestrian walkway along McMillan and McCrossan be completed before the O'Waihe High School opens so that students have safe access to the school. They felt that if the timeframe required in condition A, 1C matched that of the Mid Mile Collector and A, 1B, that it would be more practical from a construction standpoint and would still ensure that the council's intent was satisfied. And they are requesting that clarification. Staff is recommending that the timing is changed from the first phase back to the earlier part of the second phase, or at the time of substantial completion of the high school, consistent with the school district's construction timeline for the high school as originally written, since the intent of the requirement is so that the children have safe access to school. Would you like me to go on to the second one, Madam Mayor, or would you? Okay. And then, condition A, 3B, the condition read, detail shall be included for phases five, six, and nine, the phases containing the lots at Abut, McDermott, and future State Highway 16, that depicts the center line or estimated center line of the future State Highway 16 in relation to the top of the berm and wall, verifying that it's a minimum of 12 feet higher than the elevation of the center line of the state highway as required by UDC 113H 4D2. This condition requires, this is what the applicant stated, this condition requires a detail of the 12-foot-tall berm-wall combination be prepared for phases five, six, and nine to confirm the facility will be a minimum of 12 feet higher than the center line elevation of State Highway 16. The applicant believes that the intent of the council was for this condition to apply to the adopted ITD at-grade plan for State Highway 16, and that they're recommending adding the language to reference the currently approved plan as of the council hearing date to avoid future confusion in case the ITD plan for State Highway 16 changes. Staff's response to that is that there is no adopted ITD plan at this time for the extension of State Highway 16. The 300-foot-wide rideaway for State Highway 16 is currently under review as part of the corridor-wide design refinements. One of the design refinements favors State Highway 16 going over McMillan Road. ITD will be working on design refinements into this summer. The UDC standard for noise abatement along state highways requires the top of the berm or berm-and-wall combination to be a minimum of 10 feet higher than the elevation at the center line of the state highway. Council did raise that to 12 feet. However, there is a provision that allows the director to approve alternative compliance, where the applicant has a substitute noise abatement proposal in accord with ITD standards and prepared by a qualified sound engineer. Therefore, staff is recommending the condition remain the same, and if necessary in the future, the applicant can apply for alternative compliance to this standard. Staff will stand for any question, and the applicant is here tonight if the mayor and council would like to get their take on that.
Counsel, any discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer.
Did I make that motion right?
I believe you did, Mr. Palmer.
I did my best to make things complicated, going out with a bang. I'm interested to hear any commentary from the applicant, if they're interested in commenting.
Well, my recollection is that last... That last point was the reason why we had to vote against it, saying it is not clear and we should wait until there is clearer direction from ITD. Welcome.
Madam Mayor, members of council, my name is Bob Taunton. My address is 2724 South Palmetier Way in Boise, and I represent Trilogy Development that was the applicant. And again, we appreciate the approval that we received the previous evening, and we're not trying to undo that in any way, but it just seemed when we looked at the conditions that there were a couple of situations that might benefit from some clarification. So, the... And I recall that the mayor specifically asked me, will you do the sidewalks with phase one? And I... And I had a bit of a senior moment. I was thinking in my mind that, okay, we're already doing, you know, the sidewalk on McCrossan, and we're doing the sidewalk for phase one, so we're just filling in along McMillan then. And I just... It slipped my mind that actually the Collector Road was going to be, you know, based on a different timeframe. But I think the goal here is to have the sidewalk in our 10-foot pathway, additional 10-foot pathway, in place constructed before the school opens so that all of the students have an opportunity to have a safe place. And it just, from a practical standpoint, when you're constructing roads, it's just much easier to construct the sidewalk when you're doing the road as opposed to doing the sidewalk ahead of time and that sort of thing. And you just... You often worry about the construction process damaging the sidewalk, which, having been a builder developer for a long time, I can assure you that certainly happens. So, that was the situation on that. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I think that that one is clearly understood, and staff has been able... Do you agree with the recommended language from staff on that?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. The second point was, you know, we had a long discussion about what might be the situation with Highway 16. And currently, you know, there is an adopted plan. It's that at-grade plan. And how we would handle noise attenuation if the plan changes, it's just too premature to be able to address that until ITD makes their decision perhaps to alter it. So, we just thought that it would make sense that we tied the 12-foot berm, which is in addition berm-and-wall, which is additional height over the 10 feet, to the current at-grade situation for Highway 16, and then in the future, when ITD makes their change, does their noise study, we'll have a better idea of how we at that point could do the noise attenuation. But kind of if you had a... If you had an elevated, as we discussed at the hearing, if you had an elevated roadway for us to do a 12-foot berm above the elevation of the center line, that may not be... And our transportation expert indicated the same, that that would not likely be practical. There's probably some different ideas that will have to be put in place to be able to do the noise attenuation, but we don't have those facts today. Anyway, I was just trying to clarify it, but I was unaware that there was an alternative opportunity, as staff has mentioned. Knowing that, I probably would not have suggested that we revisit that topic.
So, you're good with the recommendation that the condition remain the same, and if necessary in the future, you can come back and ask for alternative compliance?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any questions from counsel? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. And thank you, staff. Okay, with that, do I have a motion to approve item B?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I guess it's a...
Madam Mayor, excuse me.
Yes?
The findings are written as the council directed staff at the last meeting, so they do need to be revised if you're approving it per staff's recommendation tonight. So, they'll have to be on a subsequent meeting.
Or can they approve it what the language is suggested?
I defer to Mr. Nary.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we prefer you approve them all together correctly because they then become the attachment to the development agreement.
Thank you.
It sounds like we could put them on next week.
Get them on next week.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, item 7C is final plat for H 2019 dash 0064. This applicant is requesting continuance. And I guess this is in order to address some outstanding issues with the plat, so the request is continue to July 2nd. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I move we continue H 2019 0064 to July 2nd.
I have a motion and a second to continue item 7C to July 2nd.
Madam Mayor, excuse me, I'm sorry. Were you aware that there isn't anything else on the agenda for the second? If you are, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure you're aware that this...
No.
As of today, is the only thing we have on that agenda. So, excuse my rude interruption, but just wanted to say that.
Could go to the night, perhaps, is the other idea?
Thank you for pointing that out. So, I had a motion and a second, but certainly I would entertain a withdrawal of that motion or amending it.
How about that? Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I'm going to take an amendment offer, and I'm going to amend the motion and move it to January, July... July 9th. Not January 9th, July 9th, 2019.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue item 7C to July 9th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes? I guess in direction to staff to notice that there will not be a July 2nd meeting.
The plan? Okay.
Okay, item 7D is final plat modified, continue from May 28th on H 2019 dash 0055. I will ask for staff comments.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the next application is a final plat modification. This subdivision is owned R4 and R8 and is located north of West Chindon Boulevard and east of North Ten Mile Road. The final plat for this subdivision was approved back in 2008 along with several subsequent time extensions. The subdivision is currently in the development process. The previously approved landscape plan for this development that's there on the right depicts a four-foot-tall wrought iron fencing along the rear of building lots adjacent to the golf course. The applicant is requesting approval to remove the fencing and leave the option open to each individual homeowner to construct fencing or not based on their needs. Because the golf course is not common open space for the subdivision, the fencing standards in the UDC, which require the developer to construct fences abutting common open space lots to distinguish common from private areas, do not apply. However, staff does feel it's necessary for the developer to provide some form of delineation between the privately-owned building lots and the golf course, such as birmingham or landscaping, plantings under bark, or other means. While staff is amenable to the applicant's request to remove the fencing, staff does recommend the applicant address at the hearing tonight how they plan to delineate private areas from the golf course. And additionally, in 2018, kind of on a separate matter, the city council approved a modification to the landscape plan to remove a pathway connection to the golf course and ballard lighting along the pedestrian pathway, and the addition of an archway or entryway feature and water fountain. The revised landscape plan for those changes also included the following changes. A note stating all wrought iron fencing would be installed by the individual lot owner and builder at the time of development and construction of each individual lot rather than by the developer with development of the subdivision as required by the UDC. And the extension of the six-foot-tall masonry screen wall along the northern boundary of the subdivision along North Big Cedar Way to within 20 feet of West Balata Court, which violates the maximum height allowed of three feet for closed vision fencing and walls in the required front yard area, and creates a safety hazard due to decreased visibility of traffic from the intersection. Because these changes were not specifically requested or approved, and because they do not comply with UDC standards, they are not approved and should be reflected correctly on the revised landscape plan submitted for this application. Becky McKay submitted written testimony on this application. She is proposing out-of-bound stakes, and have a photo of those that she submitted, to delineate the private properties from the golf course, and agreement to modify the landscape plan to comply with UDC standards to depict wrought iron fencing along the common area on Lot 45 and the modification to the location of the wall so that it's not within the 20-foot front and side yard areas in proximity to Balata Court. To my understanding from the applicant, they have revised the location of that wall. They've brought it back so it complies with UDC standards. Staff has not reviewed a plan to determine that for sure, but the applicant has conveyed to me that it's been done. It was a kind of a safety hazard there at that intersection for visibility of uncommon traffic. So, staff is recommending approval, assuming that the applicant's proposal or staff's alternative for delineation of those private lot lines are approved tonight. Thank you.
So, Sonya, in 2018, council approved the removal of the fencing, or that is a request for tonight? Tonight, right?
That's a request for tonight. There was a...
When that was put on, what year was that, that it came in?
Originally?
Uh-huh.
It was back in 2008.
So, I'm assuming, because I vaguely remember this, you... Yeah. You had Councilman Roundtree and Councilman Zerumba, both who have backyards up to the golf course, and know these property markers are contentious, and I think that's why they wanted the fencing there.
I don't disagree, Madam Mayor.
So, just wanted to clarify that. No, they somehow disappear sometimes. Any questions for staff at this time? Okay. Would the applicant's representative like to come forward? Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Becky McKay with Engineering Solutions, business address 1029 North Rosario and Meridian. I'm representing the developer of Olive Tree at Spur Wing, Jac Hewitt, on this particular application. Initially, they had proposed that there be wrought iron fencing along the lots that backed up to the golf course. Roger and Chris Anderson were concerned about that being mandatory, because I guess the existing Spur Wing lots that were previously platted with the golf course, they're not allowed to have any type of fencing adjoining the golf course. So, I guess it has that open expanse. And so, what Mr. Hewitt is proposing is these white out-of-bound stakes are supplied by the club. They are maintained and installed by the club, and that delineates the golf course from the private yards. And what he wants to do is replace that condition that is requiring that we have wrought iron fencing adjoining the golf course and have it be at the discretion of the lot owner. So, if someone does purchase a lot, they do decide to put wrought iron fencing in, they may do it on their own, but it is not required because that's kind of what the Andersons had asked Mr. Hewitt to do. In looking, he sent me some pictures. These are out at Spur Wing Golf Course. You can see that some people have delineated it with some, you know, a small landscape wall or gravels or shrubs. It kind of varies on how they want to handle it. He just wants the options for these homeowners so that they can make that choice themselves. If they choose not to, those out-of-bound stakes are provided and installed and maintained by the club. And he said this is not unusual, that it is common on golf courses, and under the U.S. Golf Association, it's recommended, and if a ball goes beyond the out-of-bound stake, then it costs you two strokes, which I don't golf, so I wouldn't know that. Sonya did bring to our attention two deficiencies in the previously approved landscape plan. One was the masonry wall. There was a site vision triangle infraction. We immediately, the day she emailed me, notified the installer of that wall and Mr. Hewitt, and told him that that needed to be remedied immediately. And so, it is my understanding that they have... We sent them information from the staff to make sure that they brought that height into compliance so we did not have any vision problems or cause an accident. So, that has been rectified. And then, staff, we do have open space, which, under the codes, it indicates that you shall fence your private lots from your provided internal open space, and Mr. Hewitt has agreed to that condition, A, one B, that he will provide wrought iron fencing along Lot 45, Block 1, as requested by staff. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions. The homes are going up, and it looks great out there.
This was approved a long time ago. Why wasn't it raised as an issue at that time? This was a contentious application for many of the Spur Wing residents to begin with. So, they didn't want the wrought iron fencing, and it wasn't necessarily because it was the golf course, but we have fencing that backs up to any development as part of the requirements. Why was that not an issue raised at that time?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Sonya, could you go to the landscape plan? So, the contention was these lots here, these were acre lots, part of the original Spur Wing.
I remember that.
And so, they... What they requested is they wanted some type of a masonry site obscuring wall all along their boundary, and we did agree to that, and that has been installed. So, the wrought iron that is being discussed this evening is just the wrought iron that adjoins the rear of our lots.
Oh, okay.
Only our lots. So, they did... We did comply with that condition to provide the wall as part of the screening for the transitioning between the two lot sizes. Yes, ma'am. I'm not getting out of that.
Thank you, Becky. Any questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, any one signed up to testify?
Madam Mayor, it was not published as a public hearing, since it's a final plat.
Oh, this is a final plat. Thank you. Any questions for staff or applicant? Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I move we approve the final plat modification for H 2019 0055.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 7D. Any discussion by council? Any... What did your motion... What is your recommendation on the fencing and the items that are in front of us?
To be able to do exactly what they're proposing?
Which is?
Not build the fence, and... All right. How do I need to word this, Sonya?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Palmer. The main applicant... The main request for you is whether you agree with the out-of-bound stakes as an appropriate form of delineation between the individual homeowner lots and the golf course. The other fencing, not to confuse the issue, but let me explain. So, that is the area that's fencing proposed to be removed in the golf course right here.
Oh, not on the other lots?
Yeah, so, two different issues. The ones up... The one up here is UDC required fencing to delineate common... The ones, the one up here is UDC required fencing to delineate common from private areas. And that was shown on the original landscape plan that was approved, and the change got slipped in with the last landscape plan modification last year. And it was not the subject of the final plat modification, and it was not specifically approved. So that was staff's point, and pointing it out in the, in the staff report, that that should not, and is not, part of the previous approval. So that with this revised landscape plan submitted with this application, they needed to reflect that correctly, as was originally approved, and the correct location of the wall. The wall was shown on this plan to end right here where my pointer's at. Instead, it was extended clear out to Balada Court here. Staff's fine with it extending out to within 20 feet of Balada in this additional area. If that's agreeable with council, that's how it was constructed. But it did not comply with UDC standards to go clear out to the street. So really, the only thing, and those two things are conditions of approval based on the original conditions. The only thing really up for your consideration, and the applicant's in agreement with those things, is removal of this fencing adjacent to the golf course, the wrought iron fencing where it was previously approved.
Madam Mayor.
The only thing really is what you need to act on is whether you feel that the out-of-bound stakes are appropriate, or if you don't, some direction for the applicant, either to provide the wrought iron fencing or something in lieu of the fencing to establish the boundary.
Madam Mayor, I'm fine with the stakes because it's an agreement between private property owners. So it shouldn't be any concern of ours.
So your motion was to remove the fencing?
Requirement.
And to?
Remove the requirement for?
To use the markers as the way to delineate.
Correct.
Okay. Second agree?
Second agrees.
Okay. Discussion.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
I will be voting no this evening. I'd like to make just a couple of comments of why. Number one, I feel like, as a golfer, I don't golf a lot, but I have golfed a lot in my past. I feel like there needs to be something there other than white stakes. Unfortunately, a couple of white stakes doesn't necessarily guarantee, you know, golfers going back and forth on property lines, and I don't believe that white stakes actually, I guess they can delineate between property lines, but not necessarily, especially in this case. And so I would like, I'm not saying that there needs to be wrought iron fence, but there needs to be something more than, in my opinion, there needs to be something more than white stakes. So I would hope that if, if, how this goes tonight in this vote, if it does come back, that there's just a little bit more, and I think that's what staff recommended. I think staff recommended even something more than white stakes as well. So that's how I'll be voting this evening.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
And the beauty here is if, if the future homeowner decides that it's not a sufficient way to keep people off their property, and they don't want people on their property, they have the option to go ahead and build the fence. If they want to have, be able to have the unobstructed view and don't mind the occasional golfer coming a few inches or feet, I don't golf, so I don't know. I don't, I don't think it's our, our job as councilmen to make sure that there's a better experience for the golfers on a private golf course. But the option is there for the future homeowner to build the fence if they want a better line there, or the possibility of the amenity of being able to look right out at a golf course unobstructed.
I guess I would just go back to the original discussion, and it was a point of contention. We have a city ordinance that requires fencing around developments. It doesn't matter that it's private property to private property. It is in every development case that we ask a wall. Any delineation, in fact, if you go back to the plat, why they have that little corner piece in the far right was to eliminate any issue with golfers and with the fencing coming out that far. That is one reason that that looks so odd. But this, this was consistent with every other development that's required to have perimeter fencing to, between private property to private property. This is consistent with that. And there should be something better than the temporary property markers, the white property markers.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
If we want to talk about consistency, I believe that there are many homes that back up to the golf course and the subdivision that don't have fences.
They were in the county when they were built, just to be clear.
Madam, are they in the city now?
I believe so, but we didn't make them put up fencing when they came into the city. Any other comments?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I'll be brief. These are, these are good issues before our council, because I think it stretches us philosophically. I think Councilmember Palmer makes a really strong point, is that this is between two private property owners, and does the city need to be involved? But to the mayor's point, we are involved. We have been involved. And I think one of the things that makes the city of Meridian really great is that we give development the opportunity to be creative and bring something different. White stakes doesn't, doesn't do it for me. So I think Councilmember Burnt hit the nail right on the head. If there's something else that they want to do to improve, achieve what they're hoping to achieve without doing the fence, I'm all for that, but white stakes just doesn't do it for me, so I'll be opposing the motion.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
As an occasional golfer, I feel like I need to weigh in, because I would much rather look for white stakes than trying to figure out if it's a berm planting or other means, that I have no idea what it is to even look for to know if I'm out of bounds, which I, on a great occasion, am. So I think as long as we're limited to one type of fencing and not a variety could go up as each owner would select differently, I'm all in favor of the homeowners getting to pick if they want to deal with white stakes and an occasional person missing the white stake and, and taking the next hit out of their yard. That's up to them.
Any further comment?
Madam Mayor, just a question. Did you mean not require, not require anything, just?
No, require white stakes, or they have the opportunity to do the selected wrought iron fence.
Okay.
So one or, one or the other, but as someone who goes out of bounds, I am very familiar with the white stakes being the markers.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any further comment? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Milam.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Okay. The ayes have it. White stakes it is. Okay, item 7E is a public hearing for H. 2019-0061. This enters our public hearing process. For anyone who is new to our process, we do have staff that makes a presentation that talks about the application and gives background information. The applicant is the second up, and they have 15 minutes to talk about the project details and anything they want to make sure that City Council has information on. The third part of that public test, or hearing, is the public testimony. Each are given three minutes to testify. And there is a little timer on the, the screen that is at the podium, so you'll see how much time you have. The applicant then has the final comment to answer any questions that were raised during the public testimony and to provide any additional information that City Council asks. The council will ask any final questions to staff, applicant, or those that provide testimony at that point. And I will note that there is a public document that council has had the opportunity to review that includes all applicant information, agency comments, public testimony, any minutes from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and that's all figured into their decisions. So with that, I will open this public hearing and ask for staff comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The next application before you is a request for a development agreement modification. This site consists of Point 76 of an acre of land. It's owned CN and is located at 1725 West Pine Street, Pine Avenue, excuse me. Little history on this property, in 2009, an amendment to the future land use map was approved from medium-density residential to commercial, as was annexation with the CN zoning and approval of a development agreement. The previous development plan for this site was for an aquatics center, which fell through. There is currently a single-family residential home on the site. The property owner now wishes to sell the property, and the prospective buyer does not wish to redevelop the property in the same manner. One consideration is to possibly renovate the existing structure for an office. Otherwise, the prospective buyer would like flexibility to explore other options for uses allowed in the CN district. The existing development agreement prohibits the following uses on the site: drinking establishments, fuel sales facilities, drive-through establishments, and vehicle washing facilities. Staff recommends the provision prohibiting these uses remain. This is a copy of the concept plan and building elevations that are included in the existing development agreement. Staff is amenable to the applicant's request with the following recommended changes to the existing development agreement provisions as noted in Section 6A of the staff report. One, removal of the requirement for future development to comply with the previous concept plan, and inclusion of language referencing the Architectural Standards Manual now in effect for design review. Two, the requirement for submission of a design review application with the Certificate of Zoning Compliance application. Three, removal of language limiting access to the site, to the existing location, in favor of language that still limits access to one driveway via Pine Avenue but allows its relocation if necessary with redevelopment. And lastly, removal of the requirement for the existing septic system and domestic well to be removed from service, as this has already been done, and the property is hooked up to city water and sewer services. Written testimony has been received from the applicant. He is in agreement with the staff report, and staff is recommending approval. Staff will stand for any questions.
Counsel, any questions for staff?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Porter.
Just one question. Sonia, on, does the existing DA require cross-access?
I believe it does. Yes, actually, it does. And that's in your staff report there, if you look at the analysis section, East and West, yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Near the southern end of the property, as I recall.
Any other questions? Who's the applicant here?
Good evening.
Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Garland Goff, 2010 North Momberto Avenue in Boise, Idaho.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. I have no, I concur.
Mr. Goff, can you pull the microphone up?
Oh, sure.
Yes, thank you.
I concur completely with what, what's been presented by staff. That's what we requested, and that's what we would like to have. I don't know if you have any other questions with respects to this property or not.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, are there any, anyone sign up to testify?
Madam Mayor, no one has signed in to testify.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to provide public testimony? Yes, ma'am. Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Carla Morton. I live at 2743 West Wave Court, which is just about three-fourths of a mile away from this residence on the north side of Pine. And I do have a question in regard to safety considerations for high school students along there, as well as for any, because if it is going to be turned into a business, that means there will be a lot more traffic, probably during the weekday when school is in session. I think that we need to understand that students are not always on their wisest behavior. There is a crosswalk right there to the west, just by Tall Pine. I can't remember if it's on the east or west side of Tall Pine, but there is a crosswalk there. And I know that students go next door to the launch pad for lunch, sometimes, and also for Christian release time, non-denominational religious Christian release time, I think is how it's worded. So I would like to think about their safety, as well as the fact that I don't believe there's really a turn lane at that point. It begins to start a little bit east of that property. And so those are some considerations that I was wondering if those were going to be addressed by ACHD, or what part of the community would be addressing that.
Because of the size, ACHD has not provided comments.
Okay.
Yeah, good questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Carla.
Any further comment? Would the applicant care to respond to some of the questions that were just raised? Or try? If you'll just state your name again for the record.
Yeah, my name is Garland Goff. At the time that we had looked at developing the property, that was not even a consideration at that time. We had cross-access in the south part of the property. They had since, since the time that we've owned the property, they've widened the road. So the property that's for sale consists of just a residential building, and the person that's interested in purchasing the property is a CPA, so he will have, is considering having a CPA office in there. So there won't be a tremendous amount of traffic there.
Okay. Counsel, any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anything further for staff?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I move we close the public hearing on item 7E.
Second.
Second. Could that be the vote?
I have a motion and a number of seconds to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes?
I think that's the most support for a motion I will ever have. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I move we approve the modification of the development agreement for H. 2019-0061 with staff's conditions, provisions.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
I appreciate Carla's information in regard to safety. Obviously, we take safety very seriously, especially when it comes to kiddos and our walkways. Looking at this application, I don't know what, even with ACHD, what we could, they could do to prevent, or modify, or mitigate traffic in regard to this development. So, just looking at, I could be wrong, but it'd be pretty tough to do anything different. Fortunately, kiddos sometimes are gonna, you know, sometimes they make dumb choices, and hopefully they're, they're smart, especially along busy streets. And so I just wanted to, just, just to say that, you know, her comment was, I heard it, and I think it is prudent, I just don't know what ACHD could, ACHD could do to make it different, so.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
To that point, the students are already crossing to go over there to the launch pad. And I grew up just off of Pine Street as a youth, and school bell rings, there's a mass exodus of students out of all corners, out of that area. And as a result, you've had better signalization that has went in over there at Pine, and expansion of Pine to really address some of those things. And I don't believe, I could be wrong, that there's not gonna be a huge influx of students wanting to go to a CPA office after school.
More than in aquatics.
More than in aquatics.
Yeah.
So I think that, I think that we're, we're not creating any undue So I think that we're not creating any undue concern or burden if we were to approve this. So I'm supportive.
Exactly. And certainly, the previously approved development plan for an aquatic center would have generated more foot traffic and car traffic, and this has a, certainly, a lesser use. Any other comments?
Madam Mayor?
Way to combine them both.
Mr. Palmer?
I think, not to invalidate the point, but I think I'm less worried about what the visitors to the CPA office might do to the students than I am what the students might do to the visitors of the CPA office.
Okay, any further comments?
Having been a student at that high school.
Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Item 7F is a public hearing for H 2019-0034. We'll ask for staff comments and open the public hearing. Hi, Bill.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. See, we know how to clear out a room this evening with some text changes. So the first text amendment before you this evening is initiated by a private, by the applicant. It's not a city-initiated text change, like you typically see. So I would inform the council that this particular item was not vetted in front of our UDC focus group or sent to VCA for any comments. Really, this particular application this evening was predicated on an application that was before you approximately six months ago with the Franklin Self-Storage Facility that was improved in front of the apartment complex there, just west of Franklin in Ten Mile Intersection, next to the church there. And I think the, both the Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Council kind of struggled with how to store its facility into the context of an ancillary use. And so after that hearing, we met with the applicant, and we tried to come up with some ideas, some strategies on what we could do to potentially help them along. We talked about the potential of rezoning the property, but we weren't sure on how that rezone would be consistent with the comprehensive plan, because this area is part of the Ten Mile specific area plan. And so we toyed around with the idea of maybe potentially having them go through a text amendment, and we noodled some ideas, and this is what's basically before you this evening. And so hopefully, we captured what we heard from both our P&amp;Z Commission and City Council as you deliberated on that application approximately six months ago. So the applicant's proposal this evening includes three parts. The first is a definition. The second is how we are gonna handle that land use and how it's gonna be entitled on a particular property, which you see here in the table. So it'll be, their proposal is to allow it in the R-15 and the R-40 zone with a conditional use permit. I would inform the council that any storage facility within, standalone commercial storage facility is currently required to conditional use permit in the CC zone, the CG zone, and it's principally permitted in the IL zone. And so this particular use is almost a hybrid of what we currently have on the books today. And this would be, not only, it would be a standalone residential facility, but there would be bookends on it. And that's the third part of their proposal, where the applicant and staff work together on a compromise for specific use standards for this new use that they're proposing as part of the UDC text amendment. I would mention, too, the council as well, that the current commercial standards have 11 specific use standards associated with them. The items before you this evening has 17. So we did try to provide a more rigid zoning ordinance, or more specific standards to ensure that these aren't popping up all over the city of Meridian, that they are really meant to be a standalone storage facility that's in conjunction with a residential use or a high-density project. And that was the goal, and I think that was what we heard from the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council approximately six months ago. So the items before you, really, the meat of the zoning text amendment by the applicant is before you on this particular graphic. You can see here that it has to be encouraged or accompanied with a single-family and/or multifamily development. That would either be existing or proposed. It doesn't have to necessarily be constructed at that time. We are limiting the size of that particular facility to no more than eight acres in size. That's something that the Planning and Zoning Commission struggled with at their hearing. Finding that right balance of five acres or less is where they were landed, but they felt comfortable that because this is going through the conditional use process, that it would have that ability, at their discretion at the public hearing, to say, no, we don't want any more than four acres of storage, and the remainder would have to be a residential component or some other land use. The second item is access to this particular facility. If you recall, with that Franklin Elevate Storage Project, they were taking access from a local street and not an arterial. And that's something that we felt was important as part of this requirement as well. The hours of operation are also restricted further than what's currently allowed in the storage facilities under the specific use standards. So this is 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, which is consistent with our LO zone in RCN zoning district. Again, the other one, storage of materials are related to residential use. And Item E, Item F, same thing. It would not be a dwelling unit, which is pretty consistent with our other standards. The other item that was added as part of the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation was to put actually a captive limit, a height limit, on the building height. And the 35 feet was also consistent with a residential zoning district. Everything would be fully enclosed. Item I, we are limiting, we are adding, requiring more landscape buffers as part of this facility so that it would be integrated in with the residential development. So you can see here a local road, although code only requires a 10-foot landscape buffer, the applicant is proposing to require a 20-foot landscape buffer as part of those storage facilities. The other item for you is second means of access. This is a fire department requirement, but also consistent with code. Item K would have indoor storage only, so nothing exterior, so RVs or any of those things, boats would be in enclosed storage as well. And Item L is probably the one that staff wanted to have the most influence on, and that is, you know, typically, when you go see storage facilities, commercial ones, they're not, they're usually mostly metal. They have some architectural elements to them, but primarily building materials are metal as a primary building material, or some component of that. And we felt if this is gonna be truly integrated and part of a residential community, then it needs to have the look and feel of a residential community. And so this is where we've actually tied them to complying with our more stringent traditional neighborhood districts. So we can envision these being built with similar building materials as the surrounding residential neighborhood. And that was the intent that the applicant wanted to bring forward to these, to not only the Planning and Zoning Commission, but also this body as well. Signage will also be restricted. That was something that we talked about. Keep it smaller scale, more pedestrian scale, like our LO zoning districts as well. And then, one item of discussion by the Planning and Zoning Commission was the onsite auctions. And that spurred some of the changes that you see in the red text here this evening. One, staff made some modifications because there were some errors. The code was outdated, and we had to align it with our current Title III, Chapter IV, which are temporary use standards that the clerk's office deals with, not our, not the planning code. But the other issue that was brought up was the hours of operation for onsite auctions. And so the Planning and Zoning Commission landed on daylight hours, which was, in their minds, sunrise to sunset, which can have a difference between winter hours and summer hours, as we all know. And so any temporary use permit application submitted to the clerk's office, the applicant will just have to verify, submit their, identify their hours of operation, which I believe they do, and then we'll verify that through our process, through our software, what those hours are, make sure that they're consistent with code. Item O is a new provision, or changes again. Planning and Zoning Commission was concerned about security for these types of facilities and how that would be managed. Some of these facilities have onsite managers, some don't. A lot of times, there may be a key card, someone gets a code, and they punch in their code, and they're able to enter and exit the facility. So they wanted some details on that with the application submitted, and then also provide a security plan. So are they gonna have cameras onsite? Are they gonna have a security company that comes and monitors these 24/7? Those are things that they discussed at the public hearing, and so we codified those as part of those recommended changes. And then P and Q are pretty standard requirements that we currently have in code. So nothing new, just adding what we already currently have in code. So in your hearing outline this evening, I did identify those folks that testified at the hearing, and also identified key items of public testimony and discussions, items discussed by the commission. I didn't know if, you have that in front of you? I didn't know if you wanted me to go on record and read it all into the record. If you feel satisfied with what you have here, I'll just conclude my presentation and stand for any questions you may have.
Or Bill?
Questions? Where's Mud?
Becky?
Sorry, you get a double dose tonight.
I put your business addresses on Rosario Place.
Thank you. Some nights, I forget that. Becky McKay Engineering Solutions, you know my address. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm representing Ten Mile Development, Gray Wolf, in the application that's before you. As Bill indicated, about six months ago, we came before this body asking for a rezone of a four-acre LO parcel to R-15, and then asking for an accessory use for mini-storage. It was, the application basically was out of necessity because of the parking issues that they were having on the site, and the determination that when we build garages in the apartments, and they're intended to be utilized for cars, they're counted as part of our parking ratio, 70% of those garages are used for personal items and recreational vehicles and so forth. And then they're taking up additional spaces, and then we end up with residents parking along the public right-ofways and causing parking issues. So my clients decided, you know, we have four acres here, we can do a really nice storage unit facility that will complement the Silver Oaks Apartments. But then, as we moved through that process, and we saw their attorneys reviewed the conditions of approval and the restrictions that are in the code, if it is an accessory use, they became extremely nervous about moving forward. And so if you remember, we had a lengthy discussion, and everyone said, you know, we think this is a good idea. We would like to see an integration of some of these storage facilities with these larger multifamily projects, but we don't have the ability to do that. And if you could get with the staff and look at options, look at alternatives. So that's what we did. And Gray and myself want to thank Bill and Caleb, because they were instrumental in sitting down with us and going through the pros, the cons of, you know, Comp Plan Amendment, Ordinance Amendment, you know, what provisions can we utilize to make sure that this is a highly restricted use? Because it isn't, will be allowed as a conditional use in an R-15 or an R-40 zone, so it could be denied. And so I took, you know, those provisions that, or those concerns that Bill and Caleb had, and, you know, we, I wrote up this residential storage facility definition, which basically indicates that it's incidental to a residential property or dwelling units and intended for storing personal property, and not used, like, for business purposes, like you would a standard commercial storage. And the one thing that I wanted to make sure is, the facility is encouraged to accompany or be a component of a single-family or multifamily residential development, along with a conditional use permit. And being a component of, meaning it needs to be compatible with in architecture, in When we went to the commission, the commission liked the idea. They thought it was, you know, a good idea, revolutionary idea. But they wanted to make sure that it wasn't abused. They said, you know, we don't want these popping up in every little spot R-15 zone that's out there. And so there was a discussion on the size. The size ended up, in the final motion, at eight acres. There was discussion about capping it at five. As far as my clients are concerned, that is obviously at the discretion of the council. One of the commissioners said, well, what if we had an extremely large development? Say it was on, you know, 165 acres, and they needed eight acres for their, their storage facility to accompany their development? So maybe we should leave it at eight. Another said, well, we'd obviously, under a conditional use permit, have the ability to say, you know, you only have a 15-acre site, and you want eight acres of storage. I don't think so. That's, that's just a little over the top here. We don't see that as a component, that's more a standalone. And then, one of the key things is, it could be located along an arterial roadway, but no direct access off of the arterial. Access would have to be taken within, within the residential project along a collector or a local street. And I thought that that, you know, that's important, because most of those commercial-type storage facilities do have direct access to the arterials. We wanted to limit those hours of operation so they are residential-compatible. And then, we did, as Bill indicated, we put in landscape buffers that are above and beyond what you would find on a normal storage facility, so that it's landscaped, that landscaping is consistent with the residential landscaping. We think that, you know, vetting it through the Planning and Zoning Commission and your staff, we've got a good ordinance amendment, one that can be utilized to cut down on the number of trips. I have employees, they have, they have storage units for personal items, one has a trailer, and they have to drive miles to get to their unit. And so, you know, when I discussed this with them, they were like, that would be really awesome. I'd love to have one in my neighborhood. And Bill recommended that provision, that the architectural style must comply with your design guideline standards for the traditional neighborhood, the TNR zone. So we don't get something that looks commercial, looks industrial, and sticks out. We want this to be integrated. We want it to be kind of seamless in that development, and be a part and a component. And I think what we have before you is really good provisions that will tighten it down. And if a, if a project comes through, and the council or the commission doesn't believe that the request meets these provisions, they deny it. That's why we asked for a conditional use permit. Councilmember Borton made the comment when we came through with the R-15. You know, I don't want you, you know, to come back and ask for a DA modification. So how we have handled that is we have held off on signing our development agreement and brought this ordinance amendment through the process. And then, what the staff has recommended is that then we file a development agreement modification prior to the development agreement being signed and executed. So that's how we've handled that, not to create a situation that you have to deal with down the road. So I'll be submitting that this week, but because my deadline is June 18th for returning that DA back to your staff attorney. We ask the council to support this. You know, we're trying to be creative in our planning and make a better community, and I think this is a great step. And I hope that a lot of the other large multifamily developments will, will look at this model and go down the path that we're going. And I think Gray wanted to say a couple words in closing.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Gray Wolf, 14, Ten Mile Development, 1409 North Main Street in Meridian. When we were here six months ago, I just, I was trying to remember, six months ago, it seemed like it was like a month and a half ago. We debated in here, and you guys nicely kind of coached us through how to make this thing work. And we are very appreciative of the staff, the time that we've spent on it. And we think what we finally got after, I mean, I've never sat through a three-hour debate in a planning and zoning meeting, but it was thorough, and it was good. And I think it's been well thought out, what we have here. I think they uncovered every stone. Our biggest problem was, as an accessory use, only being able to rent, if you recall, to those people in the development. So I think, with this being said, we're still very excited about renting to the residents, but this also gives it, for that area, a feel that gets done what you guys all wanted in the original planning, or the original council meeting. I think we accomplished that. And I think we did it, and even did more than what I envisioned having it happen, because as things develop in all of these different places, I truly believe that in subdivisions or multifamily, this is gonna be a nice thing for the city of Meridian to kind of have, to be able to use it. to kind of have, to be able to use it. Because I do believe residents like having their stuff close. So, even though we were the first one to do this, I think it's a great plan. I'm hoping you guys will support it. I don't think we've forgotten anything. We're very, very happy with the design. We haven't changed any of that, the landscaping, the look, the architecture. I think it's going to tie in nicely out there and we're very excited about hoping to move forward with this. So, if you have any questions, I'll answer them. If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Borton, did you have a question?
I do. If I could. A question for Becky, actually.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Borton, yes?
Yes, thank you for taking the laboring oar from the development community to bring the, an opportunity for improvement and some flexibility. The one, and, and if this was discussed earlier, I missed it, but the only concern that, that jumped out to me was, and your comment reminded me of it, the example of, with regards to the eight acres.
Yes.
The example of, if you have an application that comes in that's 15 acres, they want to do eight acres of self-storage, if they complied with everything else, I don't think we could, we could deny a CUP, that's eight acres in a 15-acre development. I just don't think legally we could do it. If, or if the reason was, we wished it was fewer than eight acres. So, the, the thought was, can you capture the same intent by having the acreage of the facility capped at a X percentage of the overall development size?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Borton, that was brought up at the commission. If, if you could, you know, if you could capture it, that it, it could only be a certain percentage.
It seemed like that would provide the flexibility for the 100-acre property
Correct.
And address the concern if it was 15 acres.
Correct. And so, you know, and then some of the other members were convinced that, you know, maybe we should just put a cap on it. And like, our site is four acres, maybe it should just be five. Because the average more, commercial-type storage facility is typically eight to 10 or larger. The big ones are larger, but the ones that I've done in Meridian ranged between eight and 10. So, you know, maybe five is the right number, and we're comfortable with that, you know, or, I don't know, if Bill has an idea, you know, a percentage of the overall project, but no more than eight? I don't know.
Yeah, you could do an either/or, not to exceed.
Not to exceed eight.
And, and Madam Mayor, I'm just trying to capture that.
Yeah, I understand that.
Preserve the flexibility, but also, because we can't deny a CUP if the, if you do it eight acres, I think, even if we said, shucks, we wish it was smaller, we're still stuck. So, I think the percentage would be the only way to, Mr. Neri, correct me if I'm wrong, if you had a 20-acre development and we wished it was only four acres, the only way to require that limitation is to have a percentage, be the metric that says how big it can be. Right? Even if you have a cap, you know, a percentage or not to exceed X, you could always go up to the X. So, if that's a concern we need to address or at least try and account for, couldn't think of a solution other than a percentage as being the formula that says, and it might still get you the size you need to be successful, but still a formula that floats with the size of the project.
Can you give a, a percentage, just as long as it doesn't exceed, or an acreage, just as long as it doesn't exceed X percent of the development?
Sure, Madam Mayor, like, the, the thing that jumped out, the simple math, was, you know, an acreage not to exceed 10%.
Yeah.
Now, the storage facility can't exceed 10% of the overall.
Overall.
Acreage.
Acreage. And no more, what are we, Gray, what's our, what's our total acreage?
It's 23.
23 acres.
So, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, and you're going down a really good road, but one of the things, I think, because I've owned a couple of storage facilities in the past that I've sold, in fact, the one next to the church on Ten Mile, I originally developed. The issue is, with this, the larger they are, the more encouraging it is to have people do RV storage. And that's, RV storage takes so much more room. So, if you're limiting it to residential-only, all-in-closed, the density of the number of units is better, which means, in my opinion, you don't have to have them be as big. And so, the ones that are eight, 10, 14 acres, they have outdoor RV coverage, storage. So, lowering the roof to 35 and doing that prevents that. So, I think you can get more density inside a smaller development. With the apartments, there's 370 apartment units there, so the density of the residents, in my opinion, has to be taken into consideration when you're looking at a percentage. You've got 370 people living in 23 acres, really, right? And depending upon the density of the building, I think you've got to take that into consideration versus a subdivision where you've got houses, you don't need as much percentage for storage, right? So, that, you, you've got a problem with the density of the number of residents living there. If we did 10% on this one, it would be 2.4 acres, because we got 24 acres roughly, so that would be 2.4, and this one's about 3.8. So, I think you're going down a good road there, but the density of the number of residents versus a residential subdivision, which I personally think a residential subdivision, this would be a great amenity to a subdivision, to keep the traffic down, you're going to have to have, in my opinion, less percentage as you would with an apartment complex where you've got more density of residents. So, that was what they, that's what the Planning and Zoning Commission, I think to a certain extent, kind of struggled with on the percentage, because you've got to take into consideration the number of people. So, hopefully that helps a little bit.
Maybe it's in percentage to the density rather than the acreage.
Perhaps.
Yeah, number of units, I don't know.
Excuse me, one, one, one thing that I remember, it was a long meeting, but one of the things they had mentioned with this, that they wanted to make sure that the council, and I don't know if legally I'm doing this right, Bill, or talking about it, that you guys had the ultimate say-so on the size in this arena.
Right.
So, you could say, okay, it's apartments, so we understand it might have to be a little small, you know, my point is that they wanted to preserve you guys having the say-so in here, how big that is. So, if someone came in and wanted to take advantage of this, they couldn't. But that's where the eight came in. Eight, they thought, was a pretty good number that would give you guys the latitude to decide how big you wanted it. Is that, does that kind of way it came up in the meeting?
Yeah, I think, I think they were, Becky McKay, they were leaving it up to the council to make that decision, because there were, there were varying opinions, you know, should it be capped at five, should it be eight, should it be seven? I think one of them made a comment, could we put a provision in there that it would be a, no more than eight, but of a size and scale consistent with the development that it accompanies? So, that you didn't end up with eight acres of houses and eight acres of, of mini-storage. So.
And that, and that that would jump off the page, actually, and say, hey, this, it's a 10-acre subdivision, you don't need six acres of storage. And it, that you would be able to see what the developer was trying to do and say, you don't need that much. And if it's not outdoor RV-type storage, then you shouldn't need that big of a site to get, to accomplish that.
And it might be a problem that would be very remote and, and, Mr. Neri, just, we can cut to the chase, if I'm, if I'm wrong on that, I don't think the council can decide, can reject it and reduce the size if it is compliant.
Mr. President, members of the council, Councilman Borton. I would agree with you. I, I think it would be problematic if the only basis of a CUP denial was because it met all the standards, but we don't like that it's more than, or half or more of the subdivision. But could you reach the same? It sounds like the, the, the eight acres was really a consensus opinion on the appropriate size, regardless of the size of, of the facility.
Correct.
So, if, if the direction was that it could be no larger than eight acres and no more than four, or, and, and no more than 40% of the building or the, or the lot size, so it is less than half, but it still can't exceed eight acres. So, you can build up to eight acres, depending on what size it is, but if it's, if it's, whatever 40% works out to eight acres, you, you know, it would have to be that size. So, you're still going to be less than half, but no more than eight acres.
That's good.
Is that kind of where the, sounds like where the conversation was? That seemed the tipping point for folks, was the half or more than half. So, if you said that, and we'll figure out artfully how to say that, but eight seems like a sweet spot and less than half seems like the concern.
That was articulated well, that's right.
We agree with Mr. Neri, something like, yeah, 40% or 30, 35 or something like that, and no greater than eight. So, you're capping it in two ways to cover.
Does that make sense to my concern on the CUP?
Yes, sir.
Make sure we.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, council, any other questions on that point? Thanks, Becky.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Mr. Clerk, any sign-ups?
Mr. President, no. No sign-ups.
Okay, no sign-ups. Anyone in the audience who might wish to come forward and provide some testimony? Speak now. River, hold your piece. Denise, welcome.
My name is Denise LaFever, 6706 North Selvia Way, and as Trigg and the rest of you know, I have been in these meetings for a long time, and I can't hear to tell you that residents do care about storage, and they have opposed storage on multiple times. I am opposed to a UDC text change to avoid a comprehensive plan change. NAPA has a six-month freeze on storage facilities right now. Call a spade a spade, this, this, this is a commercial, commercial use into and next to a residential with just a simple CUP process. This impacts all of Meridian, no guarantee that it is incidental, and no way for the city to monitor. Eight, eight acres was a big topic of conversation during the P&amp;Z meetings. This deteriorates the public process for our elected officials to weigh in on the decision, which we expect you to do. We have a process right now, it's called a rezone. If they want to have that project approved, they just simply rezone it using commercial. I am not opposed to the project that they are asking for at Ten Mile to have that storage. I think it's great. Go ahead and do a comprehensive plan change, go ahead and do a commercial thing, it makes sense there, that's fine. I am opposed to an absolute, across-the-board change when I have sat here and watched residents time and time again have things to say about residential. This is just a commercial use next to residential, which our residents have opposed. So, are there any questions?
Thank you, Denise.
Mr. President.
Mr. Palmer.
Denise, is it more palatable that it's being restricted to R-15 and R-40s and not necessarily R-4s and R-8s?
Absolutely not. This is across-the-board, our residents have opposed to it, we have a process to accommodate it. If they would like to go back through and have that storage next to the multifamily, by all means, ask for a rezone for a commercial. I'm 100% on board with that.
But Denise, doesn't that get you to the exact same spot?
But it's not a sweeping, easy-to-do, the CUP process, it, it's too easy to go through, it, it doesn't go through the whole entirety city council process and doesn't allow the appropriate way for our residents to weigh in. And, and we do expect our city council members to act on our behalf. This is at a time that NAPA is going back through and putting in a freeze on storage, and here we got our, making it even easier for something that I know our residents have sat here in these council meetings and have opposed. So, including, including Spurwing. I, that, all of my neighbors were there talking about the storage next to Spurwing. So.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any questions from council?
Next, Denise.
Okay, any, any other testimony?
Becky? Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, Becky McKay. I guess to, to kind of counter the, the comments, we're not trying to make it easy, we're trying to make it hard. We're trying to provide provisions where it's highly scrutinized, and to go in and rezone to commercial is not appropriate in some areas, that's spot zoning. We had this extensive discussion about the Ten Mile specific area plan and that there's definite need for storage, but yet there is no provisions for any storage. And we have multiple multifamily projects in that area that will benefit from this and utilize this. We want to make this process very stringent. We're, this is not to replace commercial storage, this is to create a complementary storage facility that is accompanying and related to a particular development, not to go into an existing neighborhood and bring in an intrusive storage facility. And that's what was hap, trying to go, happened on Chindon and why there was so much opposition to it. You had an established, primarily single-family detached neighborhood, and then they were trying to bring in intrusive storage right on the state highway. This is a different animal, this is a small-scale animal, and like I said, you know, it, it's going to benefit the city. What's happening in NAPA, it's all these large, cheap, commercial, tin, storage facilities going up because they don't have architectural standards. They don't have all the landscaping standards and controls that the City of Meridian has, and so they're cropping up all over. Aesthetically, they're not pleasing, and they're sucking up all their industrial land. And if you, if you'd read the article, that was the primary concern, that they were losing too much industrial land, too much commercial land to mini-storage, that they think a higher and better use needs to be looked at because it's being, they felt it was being wasted. And that's why the moratorium's there. This is not the same animal. And I ask the council, support it, because we think we've, we've come a long way and we've, we've really done a good job and, and your staff's supportive of it, and, and I think when they see it, I mean, I think other developments, especially multifamily, will look at that as a model and go, hey, that is, that is a good idea. And if they can meet all these standards and go through the process and the hurdles we've gone through, and we still have to come through as a conditional use, so our, our path is, is not ending here. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Do you mind the question?
Yeah, don't run off.
Don't run off. Yeah, I feel like you might be. I, I think I've only got one, just maybe a comment from you. My opposition is not to the project, but I, I think I do have some reservations about the process. And I want to applaud you and staff for working really hard to make this arrow as sharp and as efficient and as like, perfect as possible. But you talked about that, you know, going for a rezone was kind of spot zoning, and I can't help but feel that this process is a little bit like spot zoning, and you, you commented that you think that this would be utilized across our community, but we haven't seen or heard anything about this from anybody else. And this feels a little bit like it's a response to the application that you guys had before, six months ago. So, help me understand how this UDC text amendment change is really going to benefit our community when we haven't seen these types of requests before.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Kavner, what we're seeing in the development community as prices escalate, the lot sizes are getting smaller. Also, we're seeing increase in densities, they're trying to be more cost-effective, better utilization of land. All the covenants for all the subdivisions that I've ever done do not allow for any recreational vehicle storage on the lots. And I've had maybe two subdivisions in all these years that had RV garages as an option, but they're, but those are higher-end. So, the people that may have a jet ski or a motorcycle, or just have too much personal goods, and all they can afford is a 1,200-square-foot house with a two-car garage, need storage. And so, the demand for storage has really gone up dramatically as, you know, these prices escalate and as development, when, you know, when people could go out and buy an acre lot and put your RV right there beside your, your driveway, you know, we didn't have these issues. But, but times have changed, and I, I think we're trying to create an option that will be beneficial to the community because other multi- because other multifamily developments, instead of having personal goods in those garages, will be able to have this as an option. They can build it, integrate it into the development. You know, we're always criticized for single use on projects, you know, diversify. This is diversity. And if someone in these apartments has to drive five miles to go to their storage unit and then drive back to the apartment, you know, that's 10 miles on our public street network. And if we can minimize that, because it's right there, and promote it, and that's what Gray's going to do, is they'll get a break if they lease in there. So it's intended for that use, but we just don't want to block everyone else out.
Madam Mayor.
And I don't disagree with what you shared. To me, it's just that the process of doing a UDC text amendment change to accomplish the same result, I'm just not getting there. I guess I just don't understand why, how this process benefits our community outside of your specific project. Does that make sense? Am I articulating it the right way?
Well, Madam Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, I think, I don't think you want to see a lot of apartment complexes coming in and asking for comp plan change and rezones for four or five acres or six acres because they have a problem and they want to have mini-storage. I mean, your land use map, you have your use matrix, and so it's impossible. We can't come in and ask for a commercial zone, nor could somebody else in many, many areas that are predominantly residential. That is a spot zoning. So we're trying to design something that's residential-compatible. If I come in and I get this commercial, then I can come in as a CU, and I don't have all these provisions. And it may not, the facility may not look residential-compatible. It may not have the same architectural style. People may complain, oh, that's ugly. You know, boy, that detracts from our neighborhood. So I think, you know, we're trying to find something in the middle. We see a need. We see the ability to fill that need and still protect the city and still protect the residents and have something that is not of a commercial look.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Becky, I love this for you guys. I'm just not convinced how this looks for everyone else. And so, remind me of the discussion that we had months ago. I remember the discussion vividly. Did we talk about rezoning that four acres? Or did we talk about having you come back to us with a UDC amendment? What was the direction we gave you guys back? I just don't remember what we said.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Burton, I think there were, the Council was kind of kicking the ball around. I think the question was asked staff, does the Ten Mile area-specific plan have any provisions for storage?
Could we rezone at storage? I mean, was that the problem? Is it we just couldn't because of that Ten Mile rules?
Yeah, staff said that, you know, if they were to come in for, say, a commercial zone, then we would have to get a comprehensive plan map amendment in the Ten Mile area-specific plan. And did we really want, I mean, was that really the appropriate route? I think then Caleb brought up the fact that, you know, we could look at other avenues such as an ordinance amendment. And I think the direction that you guys gave us was, you know, get with our staff, look at the options, see if there is a solution, if this is a viable option. Maybe there isn't one, but if you can get with the staff and come up with an idea, you know, we're open, our ears are open. Because we think there's a need for it. It makes sense. We have three large apartment complexes out there.
For you guys, it makes sense.
In that particular area.
Area.
I get that.
Correct.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, if I could just add to the conversation. So, it's just not this project that's pushing this forward. We have a master plan community up north for the Oaks project. As part of that DA, they did have mini-storage. And that's what kind of predicated this eight-acre minimum or maximum size, is because they had a lot set aside for mini-storage to be ancillary or to be used with that master plan community. That subdivision has over 1,000 homes potentially. So eight acres will probably be underserved for that particular development. But that's why they included that, because it was a buffer to the interstate and they had that as part of their master plan. But under the current zoning of R-15, which is zoned, they would only allowed to have that ancillary storage for that particular project, for those residents. My experience with these commercial storage facilities is we've always done a spot zone for those because under the current code, if you want to have a residential storage facility next to a residential use, you have to do a comp plan change, you have to do a rezone in order to get the zoning in place for this to happen. So, this is just adding, the intent behind this is, one, to keep it smaller scaled and keep it more integrated, rather than having to tell the applicants when they come through with a standalone commercial industrial storage facility, more likely we're talking a rezone, a comp plan amendment with them anyways. There is no other mechanism in code to allow that use rather than going through that process or have it as an ancillary use. So that's why when Caleb, after we heard you during the public hearing for this particular project, we didn't fill a comp plan amendment for such a small piece of property in the Ten Mile area-specific plan was appropriate. We didn't know how we could get the applicant there. We brainstormed this idea. And originally, when I started this idea out with Becky and Caleb and I, we talked about limiting it to five acres. That really was the intent, is let's keep it smaller scaled. Because if you get too big, and then again, it's not, to me, it's not compatible to the residential area. So that's why that five acres seemed to be the right number. But Becky came forward with the eight-acre, the maximum for the eight acres because of that Coleman project up north. And that's where we landed on eight. And that's why it was so much, it was talked about at Planning and Zoning Commission, because where do you strike that balance? For this applicant, five acres is going to be fine for them. For Coleman, when they come forward, if they want to do something, if this isn't eight acres, then they're going to have to do something, comp plan amendment or rezone, and move forward in that particular fashion. But I just wanted to give you some context that, yeah, any storage facility typically, in my experience, has been a comp plan amendment and/or a rezone or a DA mod or something to that effect in order to get that land use in place to serve a residential facility.
Well, and I think the key to this and what makes it different than the storage facility on Chindon is that wasn't a component of a development. It was something that came in totally new. I don't know. I see what you're trying to do. I think that this kind of service in a higher-density area is an amenity. It could be considered an amenity that is important to those living in those areas. I understand the conversation, but as part, if this comes in as part of that residential development, it certainly, it gives everyone fair notice. They know what's coming in. They know what they're building around. That's a lot better than coming in with a comprehensive plan and a rezone request because that's after the fact, and it's usually after people are living there.
Yes, Madam Mayor, that's correct. And Councilman Burton, if you're more comfortable with a five-acre cap, we are agreeable to that.
What about a four-acre cap?
We're agreeable to a four-acre cap. Whatever you're comfortable with.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I move we close the public hearing on item 7F.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
This is an awesome opportunity for a fantastic amenity to be built into future projects coming into Meridian. I mean, the point that she made of, I mean, try finding a storage unit in this town. You have to pass three or four to get to one that has one available. I mean, it's just crazy. And to be able to have the opportunity to have one in your development is huge. I think it would be an extremely popular amenity. And we're building it in here with ample restrictions to where, I mean, we've got, for example, those apartments on Meridian Road that have the garages that back up to Meridian Road. I don't foresee this being much more of a bigger footprint or effect on the neighborhood than that single-body line of storage structure with all these restrictions that are built into here. I would go one further in all the discussion on the acres and whatnot to do there, to cap it at eight and restrict it to no more than 35% of the entire development. So, with that, I move that we approve the UDC change with everything that's proposed here and capping it at eight with restricting it to no more than 35% of the entire project.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Can I find out how we came up with 35%?
Madam Mayor, the project that they'll be proposing is 23, or 17.3% of their project. And there was talk of being less than half, I think maybe 40%. You know, I'm just trying to picture, you know, a development, as Councilman Borton had talked about, maybe you got 20 acres. I think maybe even 40% of a 20-acre project might be significant, actually, probably pretty significant, no matter the size of the project. So I think 35% gives an opportunity, depending on the size, to where it could still be enough to make it worthwhile doing while not restricting it too much that in a smaller development, you know, if you were to do 20% in a really small development, it wouldn't be worth building, you know, five and a half units. So the 35% would make it, or hopefully, it would be done in a smaller project, but still capping it at eight for the bigger ones anyway, where then it would be a much smaller percentage than the 35.
Okay. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Just briefly, the reason I'm supportive of it is the restrictions that staff has helped craft here that allow it to be successfully integrated into a residential community. I think the TNR, TND, design standards are one of the most important components of this that can make it successful and be integrated. So, I think it's the right way to get to the right solution, so that's why I'm supportive of it.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Laura Roberts.
Madam Mayor, I agree. I think, I thank you, Becky and Gray, for taking all that was said and massaging it to the point that we've gotten here because it seems like the way that we're going is, I don't know anybody hardly at this point that doesn't have storage. And I think to have it, easy access to the residential, to look like the apartments is a win-win because I see people all the time, I'm between two storage units within a mile of each other, and I see people driving back and forth all the time. And so I think it helps cut down on traffic. It makes it easier. It does become an amenity. And for that reason, I will support it.
Okay, any other discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Counters.
I just really love our City Council. We wrestle, we chew with this. You know, I'm sure, again, through all of our homework we read and probably watched the lengthy Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, which that body was equally split on this. Again, I don't think we heard anybody tonight that had any issues with intended outcome of what was before us in terms of that specific application. I just, I worry about the precedent that we set. So, I'll continue to oppose this motion, but the Teles are telling me it will go another way tonight. But just, I wanted to commend this body for doing good homework to bring forth kind of your decision on all these issues that we've had before tonight, including this one.
Mr. Burton.
Madam Mayor, thank you. I commend, you know, Becky and Gray for coming forth with this. I mean, I remember our first discussion was lengthy, it was hard, it was tough. This is a very unique situation. I do believe that we're crafting an ordinance for Gray's development. It scares me to think that we're thinking about adding storage units as possible amenities to future subdivisions and developments. That scares me. I think that that's, I get that there's a need, but I get there's also a place. And in the middle of a residential project isn't ideal. And so, I would, I personally would want more discussion, more thought into this, not to the extent that NAPA did by, you know, putting a moratorium on building, you know, storage units per se, but this could have a powerful effect to our community going forward. And I'm just not, right now, in a position where I can, I just can't wrap my arms around it 100%. You know, eight acres is a lot, hopped right next to a residential. I mean, even if we were to, you know, maybe take the, what is this, what is this, what is this applicant's, what is the zoning that, for this multifamily area, the 23 acres? Is it R-40 or R-15?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, they went through the rezone process to, from LO to R-15, but that has not been finalized because they haven't executed their development agreement yet. What I'm saying is if this gets approved, they're going to ask for an extension of the development agreement modification to sign it so they can go through the conditional use process once this code gets in effect and try to establish it as, under these guidelines.
Madam Mayor, but just the multifamily part of it, not this?
R-15, sir.
Any other discussion? Mr. Clerk, V. Karl.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burton?
No.
Councilmember Palmer? Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
No.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. Item 7G. Council, do you want a five-minute break? Okay?
Please.
Three breaks.
Okay, I'll call this meeting back to order. And we are on 7G, public hearing for the 2019 UDC tax amendment, H. 2019-0049. And I will open with staff comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Last item on the agenda this evening for land use applications is the 2019 UDC tax amendment. This is a joint application, actually, between myself and the Planning Division and Code Enforcement Department. So our code amendments have been in process since approximately June of last year. There have been several changes that come forward, so we delayed it a little bit longer in order to get those compiled. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe Mr. Everett was in front of you back in February talking about some code changes that you endorsed and asked him to bring forward as part of an application that he needed to take, to bring forward. And so rather than submit two separate applications, Rich and I worked together, went ahead and compiled a 17-page table for you with all the proposed code changes that are before you this evening. I would mention to council that the code enforcement changes that we worked together on are in the light gray highlight on this particular table. And then all the other items are Planning Division changes. But all of the changes that are part of this table are specifically changes to Title 11, the zoning ordinance. And I think Rich and Legal will probably come forward with other changes to other titles through a different process, but our code requires that this come through as a public hearing process. Also mentioned, so that there's a wider range of code changes. They start in Chapter 1 and they go all the way through to Chapter 5 in multiple and numerous sections. A lot of these are cleanups, cleanup items, things that we've encountered over the last year since we brought forward the previous tax amendment. And some of them are new items. And I would mention to the council that at least the Planning Division changes were actually vetted through the VCA and the UDC for their recommendations. And Rich's were not because they followed, again, a different process. He came before you, you guided him to bring forward some changes to help him and his team do a better job of enforcing our code. And that's what brings us, brings us for, before you this evening. So I won't go through all the specific items on all 17 pages because, again, a lot of these are cleanup. But I did want to at least highlight some of the more substantial changes for you this evening. We realize that we are under a comprehensive plan map amendment, or update to our comprehensive plan. We feel like these changes don't impair that process at this point. Again, these are cleanups. We basically had these items on the books about a year ago or so, and now we've finally gotten to a point that we're actually able to bring them forward to you and take, get your consideration on them this evening. So quickly, on this particular one, I think a lot of the changes to our definition sections, probably the biggest one for planning is adding the definition of linear open space to our definition of open space. Currently, in our irrigation, like when we require the tiling or piping, piping of canals, we allow, the council can grant a waiver to allow those to remain open as long as they're part of a linear open space. We don't really have that defined in the code, so what does that mean? So adding that to our definition makes some sense and tying that back to if a water facility is to remain open and incorporate as part of the development, then we have some book insert parameters on that. And we've also added that to our open space requirements, and I'll touch on that when I get to that particular page of the table. But a lot of these tax amendments or a lot of these definition changes are based on some of the clarification that our code enforcement team needed. Any questions on this page? I'll, I'll try to keep it as informal, so don't feel like you can't interrupt me with any questions as we go through the presentation. I want to make sure I capture all of your, your comments. I would mention to the council that the iteration that's before you this evening, there are some changes that came about as a result of the Planning and Zoning Commission. This project was originally scheduled for the May 2 hearing. We had some, some written testimony and some public testimony that necessitated, necessitated some changes to the code provisions that we were bringing forward. And so the commission actually continued that out for two weeks. We prepared a memo, made those changes, and got them out back to our stakeholders for comments. And those changes are reflected in this document this evening. And that's why we have, so we have no really outstanding issues for you this evening because we've already kind of vetted that out and got that cleaned up as part of the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing process. So item number, the item that you see highlighted here in, in blue and highlighted in yellow, that was, we just basically said remove it from the table. It just reverts back to what code is. Really, one of the developers wanted common driveways to be allowed off of private streets, and currently they're restricted in code to do that. And so we didn't want to open that up to all developments to take common drives off of private streets. So we really wanted to at least remove it, let code stand the way it is. And we'll look at that at a later date with, maybe take it up with the UDC focus group next year when we come forward with other changes. And then once we have the comp plan in place. The dimensional standards that you see right now, it's not explicitly listed that side loaded garages are allowed in the R8. Well, they're allowed, but there's no setbacks called out for those. So this came forward as part of the development community's request to allow different setbacks for side loaded garages. So we would have essentially a 10-foot setback for a garage if you had a side loaded garage. Page number three. This was a request that I recall the mayor putting forward was for shooting ranges in particular. Currently, the way the code's written, an indoor shooting range is defined as an indoor arts and recreation entertainment facility. And we do have one actually constructed in the Gramercy Development, and we've had numerous code violations as part of that going into there. And so we went back, we, we heard that, we took that direction. We created, not only created a definition for this use, but also created specific use standards so that we could better manage and enforce those types of uses when they go into developments. Gets developed on land. So right now, what we're proposing this evening is that we allow them as a conditional use in the ME zone and a principally permitted use in the IL zone. So we restricted them further than what they currently are allowed, rather than allowing them to go into commercial districts. They're not going to be allowed to. They're only going to be allowed in essentially three zones. I'll get into the specific use standards as I get further into my presentation. The other big item on this particular page is restaurant uses. And I think our, Fire Marshal was here talking to you about some parking concerns and some access issues with a particular development off of Meridian Road in Overland, where we can get a concentration of restaurant uses in our multi-tenant building, commercial buildings, and that creates a parking issue and limited access issues because people are parking all over the place. And so we took that to heart. We went ahead and proposed more stringent specific parking standards for restaurant use. And so if this code is enacted, we're actually going to be requiring double the amount of parking for restaurant uses than what we do for other retail or commercial uses. And I'll explain that again a little bit further as I get into the specific use standards, which is later in my presentation. The biggest item that, probably the biggest change that was talked about, or at least from the irrigation district's perspective, is they were at the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they were concerned that the city was requiring waterways to remain open as part of developments. They were concerned about public safety. And they, to be quite honest, they never even knew that we had this section of code in our ordinance. And so we tried to explain to them that there's nothing new here in the code that we're, that we were trying to do. We've always allowed the council the ability to waiver, waive tiling of canals or integrate those as part of the development. And so what we've done here, we've kind of backpedaled a little bit on this particular code change with the irrigation, based on some feedback that we got from the irrigation district. So we reverted back to code, but there are some significant changes, or at least two primary changes that you should be aware of. One is in particular to 2A here, if you can see my cursor. So currently, the code allows you to grant the waiver of the tiling of the canal. We're, we're basically changing this to align with Chapter 5. There's a table in the UDC that decides, that determines the decision-making body for certain applications. And so right now, if it's an annex, so if, in this particular case, if there's a subdivision comes before you, the council is the decision-making body for the tiling of a canal. If the applicant were to come forward with a commercial development or a staff level application and it had an open ditch on it, there would be no mechanism for staff to waive that requirement. It would have, they would have to appeal staff's condition to you in order to take action on that application. This particular change allows the director to make that call and allow that to be tiled or left open as base, based on their application submittal, based on them being the decision-making body on an administrative application. Then item D is the work that we did with the irrigation district. So that's the one where we're not going to be the hammer for them, but what we're going to do through the pre-application process and through the development process, we're going to let them know that any improvements to an irrigation easement or facility is going to require written approval from them. So that wasn't explicitly in code, but we made it a little bit stronger language for them so that we can communicate that to applicants as they work with us on land use applications. So based on the feedback that I received from the irrigation district, they were not entirely content with that language, but they certainly understood that that was a better solution to have this language in here. So we're not having both of our, what we don't want to do is have competing codes, right? The irrigation district saying, we want the irrigation facility piped, and the city council granting a waiver. We've had those situations where they felt like they've had to allow the ditch to remain because council granted a waiver when they really wanted it tiled. So I told them we'd increase our communications, but we want to make it clear to council that we want to hear from them if that's the application submittal. We want, we want feedback from them as to tell us whether or not they would support it being tiled or would support the waiver for it to be, to remain open.
Madam Mayor, one quick question on that point. So D, does that delegate the final decision to the irrigation entity, or does it still remain with us?
Madam Mayor, members of council, Councilman Borton, he does not. No, you guys are the land use authority. All that's saying is that they're going to have to obtain approval for whatever improvements are allowed in that easement. So if you were to waive it remain, if you waive the tiling of the canal, then they would, my understanding is they would grant it, but then any other pathways or landscaping is part of that open space or that waterway being open would still go through them through a license agreement.
Okay. Right. Madam Mayor, it just seems like when it says requires written approval of the appropriate irrigation entity implies that the entity has the discretion to deny approval. If they have to approve it, means they have a choice to not approve it.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, that's, certainly there's prerogative if they want to go down that.
What if they, what if they say no?
I think that's, they feel like they can't at this point because, again, you, you guys are the land use authority. All they can do is control what happens in their easement.
And they, and they, this is, this is current practice.
This is current practice, yep.
We've had, we've had some developments have to come back because they haven't had approval by the irrigation district, and it's been a condition of their approval. And so they've had to come back and modify it because they could not get that approval.
Although, there may be an extra level of scrutiny there, but I think the key here, Councilman Borton, is that from my, my perspective on working on land use applications is we would appreciate something in writing from the irrigation district as part of the application submittal so that as you guys take those requests under consideration, you know whether or not the irrigation district's going to support the waiver or not. That's really the, that's the conversation that needs to happen so that we're not put in that particular situation. The other item was, was fencing as well. So they, they, our code allows a wide array of fencing along the irrigation facilities. And their, their preference these days are to have all it fencing along irrigation facilities because a lot of times when they're doing their maintenance, they like to spray, hate to use the word round up, but they like to spray the weeds with round up. to use the word roundup, but they like to spray the weeds with roundup and kill the weeds along their, their bank ditches. And sometimes that roundup would get sprayed in the residents' backyards with the open vision fencing. And they've had numerous complaints and so they would, their preference would be to allow solid fencing along those facilities. But again, our code allows flexible or different fencing styles along those waterways. So I don't think we want to go to that route anymore. We'll let our code kind of dive what fencing we want to have and then we'll certainly take those conversations under with, advise from your direction when we come through with applications. But we allow either four-foot solid, six-foot semi-private wrought iron or open vision or four-foot with two feet of private fencing on top. So there's, there's a whole bunch of fencing standards that can apply, I think. Again, it's a conversation we need to have with the applicant and they need to share their intent with the irrigation district as to what fencing they want along that waterway. Because again, we're flexible. We can work with the irrigation district, we can work with applicants based on our current fencing standards. Outdoor lighting, this is one that's coming to you from our code enforcement officers. They've received numerous complaints and basically it's, I think what they're trying to do is just make this more enforceable for them on how to assess light trespass. And so if that's, the, the first slide that I shared with you, or at least the first page, you saw a lot of definitions related to lumens, foot candles, light trespass. All of those are a result of this particular change to our outdoor lighting standards. So I know so many of the council members may have some questions on this section. So again, Rich is here if you have any particular questions on this section before we move on.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Rich Everett from Code Enforcement. Anybody have any questions about this section? We can answer them now before Bill moves on with the others.
Rich, would you like to give any background to what the changes are that you're proposing?
Sure, thank you. So this is, this is the changes I brought forward before you in February. Nothing has been amended, but to sum it up, it provides for some units of measure that we can use in the field when assessing light trespass. The current code, the way it's written, is very specific to development and not the end user of the land essentially. It's written in a way that would provide for limitations as the land is being developed, but once the land is being used by whatever the user is, it's a residence or it's a, a business, the wording doesn't allow for us to take, us being code enforcement, to take any action. Lumens was the chief unit of measurement that's used in the code and that did not allow for us to take a measurement in the field practically. It's a laboratory-based measurement. So the change would be to use foot candles and let us take those measurements in the
Thank you. Any questions on that? Mr. Cavanagh?
Madam Mayor, thank you. For council's benefit, Rich and I had a good chat about this one.
Yeah, we sure did.
A couple of other issues today. Rich, a question popped up to my mind after, after we spoke, and I hate to catch you off guard, but the language, the, the code text, does that come from like a national best practice organization? Is that something that legal drafts based on the feedback that you've provided, that planning pulls together? Who comes up with the, the copy essentially that, that we're being asked to approve?
Sure, this, this is all a product of myself and my team, meeting with legal, going over the terminology being used, getting them to vet the terminology and make sure it's appropriate for the fit. And then sitting down with the planning folks with Caleb and Bill and making sure they're in agreement with how it reads and making sure that it's in line with the, the terminology we're already using or we're replacing. And then a lot of it was derived from the Dark Sky Council, which is a, a body that a lot of lighting ordinances are derived from, or at least that's the backbone of lighting ordinances across our country. We really strive to make sure that we were using terminology that was used across our country. So it would be very easy for the layperson to understand this code because that, that was a struggle that we had with, or that we have with. The current wording is it's very difficult for someone to understand it as we're explaining it to them using our code.
Madam Mayor, follow up. I guess, and that, that brings a question, I think too, this will probably maybe be for Mr., Mr. Nary. For council's benefit, one thing that Rich shared with me and I think planning shared with me as well is that a lot of these changes are based on feedback that we hear from a judge when code enforcement tries to enforce our code and this goes to court. And so I guess my question might be for, for Mr. Nary, have we shared these changes with, with city prosecutors and do they feel confident in their ability to enforce this or to defend our UDC text changes if they face a challenge in court?
So, Madam Members, Councilman Cavanagh, I, I don't know the answer to your question. Ms. Kane from my office is the one that normally works with code enforcement. So I don't, I can't tell you whether or not she contacted Boise City or she just took the feedback. I know she does, does talk to them a lot on these code issues. So it would be unusual for me to say that she hadn't spoken with them, but I can't tell you for sure that she did.
Anything further? Thank you, Rich.
Okay, thank you.
The next couple of slides go, coincide with the code changes that, for the lighting too, replacing graphics with more modern stylized graphics. Again, same with, with this particular slide. Again, this page, probably the more notable one for planning is the last one at the bottom of the page, landscape buffers to adjoining uses. And this is the particular one where I think this council over the last few years has seen an increase in city council waivers or city council reviews because CUPs have gone to Planning and Zoning Commission where we've had commercial uses up against residential districts. And the only mechanism for them to seek relief to the landscape buffer when you're joining, when a commercial use adjoins a residential use is to get a council waiver under the current code. And so this is one of those situations where again, we changed it from the city council decision to the decision-making body consistent with that table in chapter five on depending on which application goes to which body. So you could technically have an administrative application which grants the authority to the director to reduce the buffer. If it's a conditional use permit, the Planning and Zoning Commission can grant the waiver. And if it's an application in which impacts this particular body or this decision, requires this decision's body, then again, it's still within your purview to, to act on that waiver. So again, it's just aligning it more consistently with other sections of the code. And then some of the other code enforcement changes here are things that Rich has again encountered with court cases that we're just trying to add some stronger language as far as the outdoor storage requirements. And rest of the items are pretty much cleanup. Again, this is code enforcement, some parking issues that they're dealing with in residential subdivisions with, with vehicles. I would mention to the council that at one time we had entertained potentially looking at our RV's parking standards in residential districts, but that was removed from this particular text amendment to maybe look at that at a later date. But at this point, right now, code and planning felt that this was the appropriate first step to address this issue and then we can revisit maybe some RV parking in the future if that's something that the commission and/or council desires. Next item is just some cleanup, some, some parking standards. I think the most notable one to make mention came from our development community and that was particularly when it comes to parking, or excuse me, yes, parking for our one and two-bedroom unit homes. I think the council, as we've gone through this comprehensive plan update, we all realize that we need to have a more affordable component to our community. Things are getting expensive to live here. And so this is one suggestion that we took from the applicant or the developers that basically said, you know, we should try to reduce our parking counts for two-bedroom units so that we're not requiring every home to have a two-car garage and a 20 by 20 parking pad when they're just a smaller home. And so we took that to heart and, and we actually made that change. So that's probably the biggest change on this one is that we're going to allow reduced parking for one, for a two-bedroom home now. So we can try to build some more affordability into the community. Next item is a cleanup, basically just want to clean up our graphics for our signed code. Won't spend a lot of time on that. This is probably the biggest, another big item of contention that came out of the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing as we went through the changes was our open space standards. And I think this, this body is pretty familiar with what we've tried to do over the last several years, trying to make this one more proportionate, but make it better and more understandable for the community. And so originally when we came forward, these changes were shared with the council probably a year or so ago on how we could probably increase our open space within our developments and how can we do that. So staff went back to the drawing board. We've, we've come before you over the years with different proposals, but it's never landed on how we, the best way to do it at this point. We realize that it has, this section has to be revamped and it's entirely, we weren't willing to do that work as part of the UDC focus group as far as stakeholders getting involved because we do think it's an important piece of our, our zoning ordinance and it's an important component to our comprehensive plan. But it's based on the feedback that we heard from the development community with some of these changes was that it could actually, you know, impediment to development if we were not, if we were to allow the open space or the landscape buffers to be removed from the open space clogs because they were fearful that we would just get bare minimum landscaping along the street buffers and no real meaningful or an attractive street gate, an attractive street, streetscape with these particular changes. So we heard what the community said, we heard what our Planning and, Planning and Zoning Commission said, and we felt that it was probably appropriate back that out, allow the code to remain as is, allow the buffers to continue to count, particularly the arterial street buffers will count 50 percent, still remain 50% of the open space requirement count and then collector streets will count in its entirety. But we did propose some minor cleanup changes, as I alluded to you previously in my presentation, was that definition of linear open space. We added that to one of our qualified open space requirements and had some dimensional standards to that. You can see the words in with was, was removed and that was a requirement from the Planning and Zoning Commission to strike those two words out of it, out of here. But again, this gives the developer the ability to develop that linear open space between residential lots and still count that towards their open space requirements. So that's one cleanup item. So there's, there's a potential to increase open space or at least count open space differently, I should say. And the other two is what we count for detention facilities. Currently, if those are designed a certain way, they can count towards open space. But I think what this body's seen over the years and what the city's encountered is sometimes these end up being just remnant lots left over in the middle of subdivision that really have no recreational purpose. And so we thought we should take a stab at this and at least say that if we're going to allow it to count as open space, that it has to be on a certain sized lot and be visible from two sides of the street. So it's, it's to and through, right? It's a linear open space. Now it becomes usable. You can do more than just a detention facility, but you can actually make it purposeful rather than just a remnant piece of, a remnant common lot in the subdivision. And then the other one, excuse me, the other one was water ponds. When a lot of times we're seeing when development needs additional water rights for their property, they're creating these irrigation ponds in their open space. Well, if you're going to do that, then us, we want that developed with at least an amenity. So it becomes something rather than just water intake and not being used for anything. So a couple cleanup items. Again, as I mentioned to you, we certainly want to look at this at a later date when we get the comp plan up and running and go through other sections of the code, probably come back with a larger text amendment later next year.
Madam Mayor, hey, Bill.
Yes, sir.
For the average citizen, what did you just say in regard to open space?
The average citizen, we basically made very minimal changes to this particular section of code. What we're going to get is street buffers will continue to count towards open space and those open space lots that have a detention pond and/or a water amenity are going to have to re-up their game and provide more open space and more amenities, essentially what I said. I think, I think for this body, for the, the council, it's important to note that UDC focus group views this as an important, something very important to look at and they're all on board to sit down and try to come up with some code solutions or revamp this entire section as well. So we've got a lot of buy-in on that and we, we see it, it's certainly something that we need to look at. The other item on this particular chart is the variance process. I think this came about as part of that Costco application. And so we've determined that in looking at state code, the variance process laid out in state code, access isn't really part of the requirements of the state code and, but our code does require access to state highways to go through the variance process. So based on some of the findings that came out of that Costco, Lost Rapids application, we determined that we may be in violation and that we probably need to mimic state law. And so we're changing the variance requirements to if you want access to a state highway, no longer requires a variance application to be submitted, but it still requires council approval. So it's no different than when the developer comes before you and asks for an access to an arterial or collector roadway. It's the same thing here. You're going to want to make sure that you have ITD's approval and whether or not they've mitigated those concerns and whether or not you want to grant access to state highways. So moving forward, you won't be seeing any more variance requests for accesses to state highways. It'll be more of a, a waiver process like it's currently written in the code. And then the one item that I touched on previously too was the indoor shooting, shooting range. And so some changes came out of the Planning and Zoning Commission. They wanted some bookends on how to measure those from properties. But I think that the biggest change here is that we're not going to allow them within 300 feet of residential use, the daycare, education, their school, hospitals, nursing care facilities. So trying to preserve that quality of life for those particular residents that may be living near these types of facilities. I think that was a definitely a good suggestion that came out of this. Then the restaurant use as well, there's the parking standard. So as I mentioned to you, currently the way the code's written, any restaurant use only requires one parking stall per 500 gross floor area of commercial space. This particular instance, we're actually going, going the other way, we're going to add one per 250. So again, as I mentioned to you earlier, we're going to double that parking requirement. And then if any tenant space is converted from a retail use to a restaurant use, then the applicant's going to have to demonstrate what the parking count is for the entire development to ensure that they're still in alignment with our parking standards. They'll go through a change of use with the planning department as part of that process. It's $133 application fee for what we call a CZC change of use to provide us a parking plan and how they, they meet these clogs and then we can sign off on their TI or deny their request and they can appeal their application to this body if, if they so choose. But I did want to at least share that with you, let you know that this is one of the proposed changes that came about. If you recall, we also talked about changes to the multifamily standard parking, but again, we felt like we have a pretty good handle on that right now. So at this time, we haven't brought forth any changes to those standards. We'll let that continue to remain as part of what we currently have on the books. And I think staff has been communicating that better to our applicants that we want more parking with multifamily at pre-application meetings. And then at some point, we're also, the Planning and Zoning Commission is also recognizing that there may be more parking needed for that. So as part of that CUP process, they're implementing more stringent standards for parking in multifamily development. So I think we've got a, a pretty good handle on that right now. So we, we decided not to bring forward any changes to those parking standards. The other item that I wanted to point out to the council or as well as the change to our code, if we recall, we had last year or two, we've had several continuances because of the way the PZ Commission had to get in front of this body within 45 days under their decision. And we're making a change now to stretch that out to 70 days so we don't end, in, get caught in those strange windows where we have to hear a project just to continue it so that we're not in violation of our code. So that was one of the recommended changes that we've, we've got on the books for you this time too, to avoid that confusion for our residents because sometimes they don't understand why applications have to be continued for a certain reason per code. Next is the fees. So I think we, we had some feedback from our legal department that So I think we, we had some feedback from our legal department that to remove the fee waiver from our code. So that's the second from the bottom. And then as I mentioned to you, kind of the previous discussion on the variance process, again, we're removing the access point to state highways from our variance requirements. And then the last item is just a cleanup, noise abatement along state highways is allowed through alternative compliance. So we're just adding it to this table to clean it up, make it more consistent. So with that, there were quite a few of items that were discussed during the public testimony. Happy to go through those if you'd like me to, but you have it in front of you here on the hearing outline. If there's anything you'd like me to dive in on any of those particular issues, I'm happy to do that. I did mention to you that the commission did make the one change and remove those two words. And I would let the council know that we did. You should have received an email from Denise LaFever, Sally Reynolds, and Susan Carnes regarding this particular application to, basically delay, delay the approval of this until the new comp plan is, is in place. So with that, I'll, I'll go ahead and conclude my presentation and stand for any questions you may have. I'm sure Rich is happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Bill and Rich. Council, any questions for staff at this time?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. LaRober's.
Did I miss it or is there a different definition between a tiny house versus a tiny mobile house?
So, and I'll, after that, Madam Mayor and the council, we're dealing with an issue with tiny homes and mobile tiny homes. Mobile tiny homes are built upon a chassis, a frame, work with wheels that could be pulled behind something. And we're including the mobile tiny home into the recreational vehicle definition. So it would be treated just as the same. If that mobile home or that mobile tiny home, I'm sorry, can be pulled behind a vehicle, it's going to be treated as a recreational vehicle. We didn't want to create another class of homes that we're going to apply codes to or another class of vehicles that we're going to apply codes to. We decided to bring it right into the recreational vehicle definition and the codes that are already applied to those to simplify things.
Thank you.
Other questions at this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rich. Thanks, Bill. This is a public hearing. Mr. Clerk. And we did have a request for Denise to have 10 minutes as she represents a neighborhood association we have recognized and so.
There were no additional signups.
Okay, I will give her 10 minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Denise LaFever, 6706 North Salvia Way. And thank you, Mayor Tammy, for granting our, the 10 minutes to talk today. I'm going to step through and give you the page numbers and the citations of things that don't necessarily agree with or have concerns with. Page one, 11 dash 1A dash 1. We're concerned right here, we did talk about in the steering committee having linear open space. I think this is premature and the way that it's written now, we run the risk of further deteriorating our open space. So at this time, we're, we're opposed to this. It also in excluding pathways and sidewalks.
All right, I hate to interrupt real quick and you can even stop the time. I just, for clarity, when you said the word steer, steering committee?
Yes.
Or the comprehensive plan.
Oh, the comprehensive plan. We, we had talked about having these really cool linear paths along the irrigation ditch. The irrigation company wasn't really happy with that concept.
I just wanted to know what entity or what organization you were referencing.
Yeah. It, it, it's a great concept, it's just, it's before its time. Mobile tiny homes, 11 dash 1 dash A dash 1, page two. I'm not opposed to those, but I think we really need to be careful about how we integrate those into our community and really look at the open space requirements and the amenity standards for doing that. Table 11 dash 2A dash 6, concerned about the side-loaded garages, concerned that we have enough space for people to adequately pull in and out of their garage space. We have seen in our neighborhoods where they are there that it can cause some stress and some livability issues with the way that they're put into the developments. Page four, 11 dash 3A 6. We are opposed to changing the council, uh, city council as a decision-making body. Page nine, once again, 11 dash A dash 20, the tiny mobile homes, we're not opposed to it. We just want to make sure that we have standards and open space concerns that are built into this. 11 dash 3B dash 9C 2, landscaping buffers, we are opposed to changing the city council as the decision-making body. Table 11, I'm sorry, page 11, table 11 dash 3C dash 6. There's some confusion here as far as what happened to, how does the 55 and older development go into this table? If it's in the actual dwelling duplexes and dwelling, single family, if it was added in there, that would be great. If it's down in nursing or residential care, which we hope it's not, then it needs to stay up there with, with two plus for the cars because the 55 and older community are very active and they're a generation that likes to have people over. Page 15, 11 three G three B, we are opposed to any further reductions or deterioration of open space. Particularly, we want to see the linear open space at this time removed until some point in time that this can be looked at in its entirety. We're disappointed that the PNZ pulled out the 50% buffer credit. We would have liked to seen that go away. We would like to see open space redone to take into account usable open space varied by density and also develop assistance for credits for higher quality amenities. That's what we would like to see going forward. 11 dash 3H 3, we are opposed to having this language in here without firming this up, saying that it's verifiable financial hardship, not just simply blanket, somebody comes in and says, this is a hardship for me. It needs to be a verifiable hardship that can't be overcome by waiting for the property to develop into the future or other alternative means. That is really important to me. 11 dash four, actually, there's nothing wrong with that one, sorry. 11 dash five dash four dash B. Sorry, Mayor, I'm going to have to say this. By approving this one, that the quote that you said one time just echoes in my head. Doing this is like throwing the baby out with the bathwater. I just really feel strongly that, and, and a lot of people do, that we don't want to turn our state facilities into Eagle Highway and have all of our state facilities like Eagle Highway. We need to be diligent about having commuter and alternative spaces. Look what happened with the, the vehicle that just had their accident on I-84. We need to have alternate routes and we're continually going away from that. In closing, I would like to say, the, the vision survey results have very, have been very clear that residents desire a meridian where open space is valued, set aside and amplified. They want tranquil settings and generous recreational trails and amenities. They oppose cookie cutter neighborhoods and anywhere USA commercial developments with indistinct identities. They are concerned by the tightness of developments. They crave view sheds honoring our community, agricultural heritage, and preserving a sense of our history. The definition of stakeholder needs to shift to the 114 residents that you now serve. And with that, the UDC needs to shift towards long-term, sustainable, and livable objectives. Developers' objectives and residents' objectives don't always align. And it's important that we start listening to our residents. We believe that our residents want to be heard, especially during the period of developing a new comprehensive plan. Therefore, we oppose all substantial changes to land use being approved by the director and the, and the use of variances, DA amendments, and alternative compliance to change land use that might impact others' property's rights. We ask that these actions be subject to public hearing for two reasons. The public deserves a voice in a significant changes. Substantial changes should be decided by our elected officials, the city council that we trust that you represent, the citizens. The action above, right now, we would like, we believe that several of the proposed UDC revisions are inconsistent with our resident survey results and the vision and intent and spirit of the new comp plan. We therefore respectfully request that council will postpone any and all UDC changes that should be driven by the new comprehensive plan. I rest for any questions.
Thank you, Denise. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. LaRober's.
Madam Mayor. Denise, should we request it? Is it possible to get that in writing? Your, what you just went through, those changes and things, I know you had quite a few notes and things, but I was wondering if it's possible to condense it.
Would you like me to type it up and summarize it and send it to you with my scratch notes? I would be happy to do that.
Well, we'll have it in the minutes as well, if that would suffice.
If you can read my scratch, you're welcome to scan it.
Thank you, that would be great.
Yeah, would you like my notes?
If you don't mind.
Thank you, Chris.
If you guys haven't noticed, as people talk, I, I, I change things, I scratch things out, I rewrite things depending on how a meeting is going. So they are a mess, but you are welcome to them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to provide testimony?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Dave Jorgensen. I'm with Building Contractors Association, Southwest Idaho. And I noticed on the agenda this is tonight, also know there's other items, happy to be here. In the spirit of being freaky fast for Councilmember Palmer, I'll be quick in my comments. You're welcome. I just have a few. First of all, I thank Bill for his comments and the thoroughness of which he's gone through the changes. I just have a few questions. First of all, item, not sure the number, E, we're in reference to irrigation easements. We've had some of these discussions in the past. I'm not going to specifically say, please make a change, however I can see some problems that will arise specifically with the requirement of having any irrigation easement greater than 10 feet, having to be in a common lot. When we tie, as a development happens, go forward and ties into an existing development where there may or may not be an open space we're tying into, therefore, we're now having to have a solid fence we're adjacent to and usually those irrigation lines will run in a rear backyard. I'm very familiar with the police and fires' concerns about having common, common area along a rear or between two residential spaces that is not accessible by a street. And so I could see some design challenges and therefore requests in the public hearing format for an easement, is which I think that says. And so I'm just identifying a potential concern that you'll see in the future. Secondly, qualified open space section, I agree with Denise, there's a lot of work to redo through here. I am absolutely a proponent of, and support of upgraded landscaping buffers for developments. And I absolutely believe that if you take it out, you will have the bare minimum. If you don't get credit for it, why would I put extra in? Now, some would still want to do that like me, but I can tell you there's more who would not want to. So my, my encouragement is to follow exactly what staff has recommend, specifically the qualified open space section, meaning there's pretty much no changes, and allow the committee to work with, with staff, the business community, everybody together to try to find the proper solution there going forward. I could answer further questions if you'd like with regard to the public hearing extension or the linear open space question, meaning shrinking it down from 50 down to 20 foot, only if you want to discuss that. But the last comment is stormwater detention facility, there's a reference to, it has to be a minimum of 20,000 square feet to count. And that seems, I don't know if that's an arbitrary number, I don't know where that number came from, but I know that if I have an underground seepage bed, not a sand window, I can grasp that and I think a 10,000 square foot area is pretty, pretty decent, pretty nice play area, dog parks and all the above. And so I just had a question as to where that 20,000 square foot came from. Stand for any questions.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions from council? What do you think of the linear areas that include the, the water bodies? You, you did a great development, Woodbridge, that isn't, wasn't that yours? That integrated a lot of that in there and very well.
Madam Mayor, thank you. I can think of, that's one, Settlers Bridge, the development of Locust Grove and McMillan, where we took the Settlers Canal and widened it and did a little more with it to make a grass space. Wasn't easy working with irrigation district, but we found a solution there. Bristol Heights is another development in the adjacent city where we have a massive amount of pathways. And there aren't many days, any day of the year where we do not find someone using those pathways. They're very, very popular, especially if they have dogs walking, whatever, it's very, very popular. In that specific development, we did do a 20-foot linear pathway. And I'll just tell you, I think personally, it works, but it's tight. My, my personal preference is 30 feet. That's excluding any canal utilization adjacent to it. If you have a canal, then maybe 20-foot adjacent to the canal, then you have, of course, more than 20 feet total. This is just based on my experience of designing developments and then afterwards still walking the pathways 10, 20, 25 years later after they're installed. And so I don't know if that answers your question, Madam Mayor, but, but it's, it's my hope that as, as I look to the city in integrating these types of things is that it gets better. You make these amenities more attractive, more usable. 50 feet is, is excessive, in my opinion, for a linear pathway to get, get credit for it. 30 feet ought to be ample for a linear open space to be, to given credit. 20 is what was being proposed by staff and that's okay, I guess, but that's my personal opinion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Dave? Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks again.
You guys did pretty well. If that, those are the comments to, to really focus on. And, and certainly, I'm sure council would like to digest this and give it some thought. And we can bring this back for, for further discussion. Yes, Kev?
Madam Mayor, just maybe to, to address some of the things that were brought up, I'm not going to go point by point, but I do want to address the, the parking table, Bill, if you could go there for a second and just kind of explain to you. Bill, I think you did a good job of explaining the two-bedroom grouping that with one and two-bedroom units now. I wanted to address Denise's comment there about age-restricted elderly housing. So you can see that has gone away. What we were running into was, as she pointed out, 55 doesn't mean dead. They're active still a lot of times and a lot of times you have two cars. So, and we never implied that with this table, but, but we could see 55 and over, they drive two cars and in fact have three cars sometimes. And so why would you have a lesser requirement for that? So really, the intent here is to, to take out, it's a single-family home. Doesn't matter what your age is, it's still a single-family home. And then down below, the nursing and residential care facility is essentially what the age-restricted is. And we just group everybody, again, if you're a single-family duplex, detached, detached, townhouse, whatever it is, it doesn't matter age, it's more about function. So I just wanted to clarify that that is correct, that no 55 and over isn't included in nursing and residential care facility. They're included with just standard dwelling. I will also point out, we've had some projects come in though that are a tweener, right? They're 55 and over, not, it's not a nursing care facility, but it is geared towards folks that are almost needing some care. And they typically do have less of a need for two cars anyways. And so we threw our alternative compliance section and planned unit developments, you can't. can make that pitch to the council and say, I don't need two cars in a garage and two surface cars, I'm really targeting, and in fact, indeed restricting these lots to 75-year-olds to 95-year-olds or whatever. And so, there are, have been some cases where, and could, and can still going forward, where they're age-restricted through alternative compliance, that you could still get there and do a lesser parking amount, but you have to justify that. Just for an example, and I actually don't remember if they went through this process, but the cadence product that Brighton is building by Kleiner Park, there you could see if there, if it's, there may not be as much of a need for parking there because you have everything you need within a half-mile radius, say. So, retirees potentially, I'm not saying they won't have cars, they probably will, but you could justify having maybe less of a car because there's bus service that's being talked about, again, they're targeting 55 and over, and you have a lot of the amenities that are in close proximity. So, again, I don't know that we actually did that with that project, but, but something like that, where you could see it's a, a community that's integrated together, where again, having four car parks per just doesn't make sense. The other thing that I wanted to talk about just for a second, and I won't get into a lot of it because I, I, we've, someone said anyways, we've scaled back, or we've taken some steps back from what was initially proposed for open space and even amenities. But it's been talked about, but I wanted just to hammer the point home, we do need to look at that and really figure that out a little bit better, we need to raise the bar on development, amenities and open spaces, but we need to do that collectively after the comprehensive plan. In the same breath, I think I just took one, but essentially, design standards are another thing that we're hearing from the community, and I'm not just talking about architectural design standards, although there's some comments on that as well, but just how projects are integrated and designed with connectivity, access, a little bit of similar discussion with the storage unit discussion you guys just had, just fit and form and feel of projects and those design standards. We're getting some of that feedback now through the comprehensive plan, and I think we'll get some more here as we send the draft plan out for, for public comment. And so, I just, nothing in here is talking about site design right now, but that's on our list of things to do, but that isn't under the cleanup umbrella, those are, those are heavier lifts, those are, we need to do some real outreach, we need to get some real feedback from everybody involved and come up with real lasting long-term solutions that work for our community. So, that's not here tonight, but it's somewhat intentional, because again, that is a bigger effort that we think should occur after we get the comprehensive plan done and really understand what the community wants to see going forward, and, and even dig some more of that out after the comp plan is adopted and make some additional changes to the UDC.
Thank you Kayla. Well, council, we can put this on our future agenda, two weeks out.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I appreciate that recommendation, I guess I'm also looking for some direction either from you or from staff about what you hope to hear from us at that date certain, is it, yes, this is great, no, this isn't, or you want us prepared to go through certain elements if, if we've got questions or concerns that we're, we're working through. I just think it's important that we all be on the same page about what the outcome would be of that night, whether it's in two weeks or three weeks or whenever.
I, I think my hope would be that you take the comments you got tonight, you take what staff has put in front of you, along with the changes that have been made from planning and zoning, and, and we go through it and talk about each.
Each piece?
Uh huh. And then you give it back to staff to bring back cleaned up, and, and you see how it looks and move forward from there.
So.
I, I've spoke on behalf of planning, but.
Madam Mayor, if that's what you'd like to see, that's, I mean, I, that's the, we don't really have any expectations, we're here with the proposal, if there's changes you want to see to that before two weeks, I would take those comments now. We can, you know, I don't, I don't want to assume anything, but we could give you a cleaned-up version assuming no changes from what, what you see tonight. I'm not saying that's the right thing, but you could at least see it so there's not so much red and blues and yellows and stuff, so it's really, it's clean, and you could work from that to make changes, or, or whatever you'd like, anything from, make the, if you have a couple of tweaks tonight to approve it this evening, I, I don't know, we don't really have any necessarily expectations, we'll do whatever you want, so.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
If this were to get continued two weeks, it would, it would come back at that time as written, the recommendation for approval as it is in front of us. If there's questions between now and then, any of us can reach out individually to members of the public, the development community, to our staff, if we gather information that resolves any concerns and questions, so we can act in two weeks, at least potentially on what stands now before us is the recommendation for approval. So, we've got time to digest it and think if we can get questions answered before the 25th, or at least some background info if that helps any of us, makes it more effective.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Nerry.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm looking at your future agendas, and right now on the 25th, you have one project set for a public hearing, Three Corners Ranch was a fairly lengthy hearing at planning and zoning. July 2nd, you continued Cherry Blossom tonight to that date.
No, we didn't.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We actually canceled the July 2nd.
Oh, I apologize, so yeah, so those are the, that's what you've got, one on there at the moment, so.
Yeah, because there is nothing on it.
Okay.
So, we want, we want to put, put that on the, I think everyone nodded, you must have been out of the room.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Before we make a motion, I guess, question for Caleb or Bill, I know there was some discussion at planning and zoning, we heard a little bit about it from the public tonight, about pressing pause on this until we have an approved comp plan. Clearly, there's pieces in there that you're saying you want to go back and look at after, so why, why the desire to approve this now as opposed to later?
I'll take that one. And, and I'm not, some of these are more significant than cleanup, there, there's some real changes here. Quite frankly, they could wait, but after the comp plan, these will probably be the same changes, I don't see anything in here that conflicts with what we've heard or where the comp plan is going, at least in my opinion, that warrants holding off on these, because I don't, even if we did have something and we're like, oh shoot, well, we could change it again in six months if we need to.
Right.
So, I just don't see the benefit in, in pushing pause on them, because there are quite a few cleanup things in here that I do think help. For example, at the holidays, if you get a developer that's on vacation and you cancel a meeting or two, the 45-day window that, that's in there that we've talked about, and, and Bill mentioned, you know, we've had to schedule it for a date because we have 45 in our ordinance, that flexibility to push it out to when a developer can be present, you can actually move forward with a hearing goes away, just as an example of one thing in here that I would say makes sense to move it forward so we can do business. There are quite a few in there that are, that are of that, in that realm.
Madam Mayor.
Sorry Dean. Caleb, but I, I think I agree with you, I, I think there are some that, I guess, just me personally, I feel much more comfortable doing some now and some later, I don't know where the rest of, of council sits, and I don't know if you guys have talked about, these are the cleanup things, these are the pressing things that we need to be looking at right now, versus what are the things from, from staff's perspective that could wait. I know, I've got my list, but I, I also know that oftentimes my list doesn't match with yours, and I don't want to make an assumption about what might be something more pressing or something that's less.
Madam Mayor, you don't need to convince me you need a majority of council, right?
Right.
And we'll do whatever, I mean, this is, this is feedback we've heard, if, if your list is the prevailing list, we'll take some and we'll leave some. None of these am I going to really fight for, because again, they're cleanup, I think it helps us build the community we're trying to build more efficiently, but if you want to press pause on them, I don't have all of them in my head, but there's very, very few, if any, of these that I'm going to say, boy, we really need to do this sooner rather than later, except for maybe the one I, I pointed out.
Sure.
The variance one, you know, it's, that's, there's another one where we've gotten some legal advice that maybe it's, it's better to clean that up, and just as in a quick aside, we submitted the application today to clean up the, the variance findings, so that'll be coming back before you here a couple of months to get that cleaned up as well. But to do business, just because the comp plan's going on, there is just some business that the city needs to move forward with, and so again, just to answer, I'm fine if you want to pull out half of these or whatever, because you think they're premature in the comp plan, that's fine.
No, I appreciate your comments, this is something that is addressed now, and if, as the comprehensive plan is approved, and you look at the media things that something needs to be tweaked, there is that opportunity to do that then. We can't keep kicking the can down the road.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, I think your suggestion earlier that we come back and go through it solves both things, what do we need to address, what needs, we, what does Rich need now to function the definition of tiny house versus tiny mobile house, change the dates and then, and say pause on the ones that aren't urgent and will be impacted, I think that solves both, get it done and wait.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I think you hit kind of the nail right on the head too, and I think it's important for us to know, it's not like we started the comprehensive plan process and Bill said, oh hey, maybe I should work on this, like, I mean, this is a long project, and I want to thank, well, Bill and Caleb for bringing this to us, and I, I think I agree with Councilmember Little Roberts going through it, and the mayor's suggestion, let's go through it piece by piece, and if there's things that pop up that nobody has any issues or concerns and, and we're hearing from staff or legal or code enforcement, let's move on this, great, we can talk about that, if there's others that can wait, then we wait. Madam Mayor, one other piece if I may, and, and I don't know how to best address this, and I've talked with Bill about it, and I, I talked with Rich about it, you know, I've had some real concerns about our code related to people storing their own property in their driveway, and, and Bill referenced, that was something that was discussed and then removed, and I think that is a piece that we as a council need to, need to address. Nobody can explain to me the life safety issues and why we tell people you can't park your boat in your driveway, but you can park it on the street for three days, and some of the direction that I received is let's have code enforcement come and talk about it, they did, at that time I said this was something I wanted to have addressed, I expected that it was going to be through this process, at one point it was discussed and removed, I just, kind of to mirror to your point, I don't want to keep kicking the can down the road, I feel like the can keeps getting kicked down the road, likely unintentionally, but this is something that I keep hearing from our constituents about, and I think that it's important for us as a council to say, hey, this is something that we think is important and we support, or there's an opportunity for us to change. And so, I'm not saying that needs to happen in two weeks, but I'm hoping that by two weeks, someone, whether it's code enforcement or planning or executive branch, can give me some understanding about what that roadmap looks like for when we're going to have the opportunity to address that particular issue.
Yeah, I don't care when we address it. Rich, yeah, come on up, it's, I, I would love to get it resolved too.
Madam Mayor and council and Councilman Cavanagh, the recreational vehicle, storage, utility vehicles, the things that we spoke about earlier today, you, Councilman Cavanagh, you'd asked me, what is the foundation, what is the historical foundation of why we prohibit this, is it a life safety issue? And the answer to that is no, it's not a life safety issue. Through talking to previous supervisors of the code enforcement unit, through talking with legal staff, the historical foundation for that preclusion was a land use issue, just specific to, it's a residential home, it's used for that purpose, and it was to prevent the street yard, that required street yard for being used to store excessive vehicles, and that's the only answer I can give you, and that through many, many inquiries, that's the only answer that I can give you in that I believe is factual, there's opinions, but that's the factual basis of that.
But I think it would be easier for you, Rich, and your team, to get an idea of what council thinks about all of it, and so, because that kind of ranks up there and some of the more contentious calls we get.
Yes ma'am, it does, and I, Councilman Cavanagh and I spoke this morning, and my recommendation to him was that it would be an executive movement forward on if that was to be amended or changed, so code enforcement can remain impartial when we do take enforcement action with that code, because it is a contentious issue, and I don't want there to be a perception that we're now enforcing our code, you know, for the community to see that I was part of that change. The changes that my folks and I brought forward to you were specific in remaining impartial and just making things more practical and more easily understandable by the community enforced, if there's a sweeping change to something that my folks and I are charged with enforcing, I prefer that I don't make a recommendation to that change, and I'm not part of that process, I just receive my direction from this body and move forward and carry out the city's business.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I guess I, I think it's important, I go back and forth on that particular issue, but it's one that, when I started getting questions from constituents about, it was hard to kind of follow the bouncing balls to, to why, and I just think that we have an opportunity as the six of us to say the why, whether we keep it as is, make small modifications or remove it, that we as a body have an opportunity to weigh in so that our citizens understand at least the rationale behind that.
It's an overdue conversation, and certainly we can talk, I don't think it needs to be in this, but let's.
Go ahead.
You can eat if you would like.
But you sound like you're going around.
Yeah, but I, I think maybe we can talk about it on Friday and, and see what agenda we can start the conversation.
Great.
Okay, very good, thank you Rich.
Thank you.
Stick with us.
One last, one last comment.
Mr. Burton.
I apologize, I know we know.
Keeping tied from the sandwich.
Geez, this is a big deal, Cavanagh's been talking all night long, give me like two seconds. All right, with all kidding aside, the one, the one thing that I'm excited to, to look at and to hear from is the, is the building community in regard to the open space. Every, almost every single development that we, I say almost, a lot of the development that we, that we talk about, there's always a concern about open space, and so, I would hope that staff and, and the building community and maybe some citizens can get together and come up with a, with a feasible option. Just upping it a little bit, in my opinion, isn't, isn't, we can do better than that. But I wanted to make sense for the, the development community, I wanted to make sense for the city, you know, there's, there has to be some negotiation, there has to be some, there has to be an answer than, than just, we're just going to up it a little bit. So, that's just something that I'm, I'm, I'm excited to look at and talk about. We'll talk.
Okay, do I have a motion to continue this?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
We will continue item 7G to June 25th.
Do I have a second? I have a second. I have a motion and a second to continue item 7G to June 25th, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Ordinance 8A is 19-1829. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, this is an ordinance amending Meridian City Code, Section 8-1-1, adding a definition of parklet, renumbering Meridian Code Sections 8-1-3, 8-1-4, 8-1-5, and 8-1-6 to be Sections 8-1-4 through 8-1-7 respectively, adding a new section of Meridian City Code, Section 8-1-3 regarding requirements for parklets and providing an effective date.
You've heard this ordinance read by title, is there anyone who would like to hear the title reread, or the ordinance in its entirety?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Nerry.
I wanted neither, but Madam Mayor, members of the council, I just wanted to put on the record, you requested last week that we amend the ordinance as what previously presented, so it has been amended as you requested, so there is a provision now that if there is a, I'm going to make sure I use the right language, there is a, a public health or safety concern, then the revocation would be immediate, but if there's a correction that can be done, or anything less than that, then there would be a notice, a time for correction, and an opportunity for them to be, have a hearing before the council before revocation occurs. So, that was inserted at your direction, I just wanted to make sure you saw that. I just wanted to make sure you saw that.
Thank you, Mr. Nary. Counsel?
Are you already reading full, do you?
Yes.
I just want to make sure that we read the changes in B. I don't want the full thing, just the changes.
Next one up. B?
We're, we're on A.
Well, I just want to.
So. Okay, Mr., oh, so do I have, Ms. Little Roberts?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 19-1829 with suspension of rules.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 10 or 8A. If there's no discussion, Mr., yes.
After like, it's a cute, really cool idea, but I've really struggled with it because in a time where MDC is looking at renting space and spending a bunch of money on improvements to get additional parking, all the, the parking drama surrounding this building, the mystery meets definitions of what is going to qualify as parking spaces for the project going across the street, to contemplate allowing spaces to be taken for fun little ideas like this just seems completely unreasonable to me, so I got to vote no on it.
Hey, Mr. Clerk, will you cover all?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
No.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
The ayes have it. Item 8B is the third reading of ordinance 19-1827. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's ordinance number 19-1827, an ordinance to amend the municipal code of the city of Meridian, county of Ada, state of Idaho, amending Title 10, Chapter 7, Section 12E2, Meridian City Code, known as the Meridian Impact Fee Ordinance Fee Schedule, to provide for an amendment to the police, fire, and parks and recreation impact fee schedules and provide an effective date.
This is the third reading.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counsel, I don't know where you stand on this. I know that we all received some correspondence from some citizens who felt that the date that we had posted on our, not on where our agendas are, but where we post public hearings, that at one point, there was a different date. I think they had requested the opportunity to be able to speak, but we've already closed the public hearing, so we obviously can't take any public testimony tonight. Where we see this, if it's passed, to be implemented in October, I think it's important to have ample time for staff to be able to do their due diligence, and there's certainly an element of responsibility of our citizens for something like this. I, I'd be supportive of reopening the public hearing, continuing it for an additional week, allowing any public that feels the need to testify that we're planning to, but we're unable, that opportunity before we render a decision. I'm happy to make a motion, but I want to at least bring that out first for conversation, and if there's nobody that's waving their hands, I'll, I'll be happy to make a motion.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Nary, make sure I do this correctly. I move that we reopen the public hearing on item 8B, ordinance number 19-1827, and then to continue this item to next Tuesday, June the 18th. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance 19-1830 under 8C. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this by title?
Madam Mayor, I just want to clarify with Mr. Nary, are we proceeding with this without the other pass?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. This particular code creates a definition for the term dwelling unit. So this isn't the same as the impact fee ordinance, it's affected by the impact fee ordinance, but it really just creates a term because part of the requested change was how we counted on multifamily. So this definition can go forward tonight, it doesn't require three readings, you can move forward, it has a waiver of the reading rules, it has no effect on the impact fee ordinance, it just creates a definition. So you can move forward tonight. If you want to wait, you can, but you don't need to.
This is ordinance number 19-1830, an ordinance to amend the municipal code of the city
of Meridian, county of Ada, state of Idaho, amending Title 10, Chapter 7, Section 4, Meridian City Code, known as the definition section of the Meridian Impact Fee Ordinance, to provide for an amendment to the definition of dwelling unit, providing for a waiver of the reading rules and providing an effective date.
Yes, come on up. Okay, there is someone who would like to hear it read in its entirety.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, opening that now. Okay, an ordinance to amend the municipal code of the city of Meridian, county of Ada, state of Idaho, amending Title 10, Chapter 7, Section 4, Meridian City Code, known as the definition section of the Meridian Impact Fee Ordinance, to provide for an amendment to the definition of dwelling unit, providing for a waiver of the reading rules and providing an effective date. Whereas recent amendments to the Meridian City Development Impact Fee Schedule adopted by ordinance number 19-1827 require a clarification of the definition of dwelling units to include individual units within a multifamily structure. Be it ordained by the mayor and city council of the city of Meridian, county of Ada, state of Idaho, Section 1, the foregoing recital is hereby affirmed and incorporated herein by this reference as a finding of the city council. Section 2, the Title 10, Chapter 7, Section 4 of the Meridian City Code is amended as follows. 10-7-4 definitions, dwelling unit, a building or portion of a building designed for or whose primary purpose is for residential occupancy, and which consists of one or more rooms which are arranged, designed, or used as living and/or sleeping quarters for one or more persons. Dwelling units, her dwelling unit includes a mobile home, a manufactured home, a modular building, and individual units in a multifamily building. Section 3, that all other provisions of Title 10, Chapter 7, Section 4 remain unchanged. Section 4, that pursuant to the affirmative vote of one-half plus one of members of the full council, the rule requiring two separate readings by title and one reading be in full, one reading in full be, and the same is hereby dispensed with, and accordingly, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its passage, approval, and publication.
Counsel, you've heard this read in its entirety. What is your pleasure?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Move we approve ordinance 19-1830 with suspension of rules.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you cover all?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carrying. Okay, we're at item number nine. Any items to consider under this item? Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn.
We adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes.